Good evening. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Carabel City Commission. It's Thursday, February 6, 2020, 6:00 PM. We're at Carabel City Hall. I'd like to ask Commissioner Allen, please say the prayer and then we will say the pledge of allegiance to the flag, so please stand.
Our God and Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we have this opportunity and privilege to come together tonight and share with each other the things that need to be done for this wonderful city you've provided us with. We ask you to be with us in all wisdom and judgment that things might be right and proper for the best good for our citizens as well as in your side as well. Lord, we're mindful of what the Daniel told Nebuchadnezzar, that God rules in the kingdom of men and sets on the throne who serve he wills. And Father, we're concerned about the destruction and the division that's in our country today. We ask you to pray, we pray and ask you to, in some way, bring harmony and peace back to our wonderful nation. We ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Welcome, everyone. It's a pleasure to see you. We have a lot of folks we don't normally see. I'm glad you're all here and came out on this rainy evening. We have to make an amendment to the agenda, item two, under new business. The lady is coming from Tallahassee to present to us, and she decided that she didn't want to travel from Tallahassee this evening by herself, so we're glad she didn't do that. And we'll get that on a special meeting, talk about that later in this meeting tonight. So may I have a motion to amend the agenda and remove new business item two?
Do you want to do that or do you just table it?
I'm going to ask for it to be on another meeting, later in this meeting. Whether you can table it to when? Do you know when we're going to, what meeting we're going to have it at yet?
Can we just table it?
All right, so we're not going to amend the agenda? All right, consent agenda, January 9, 2019, 2020 minutes. And the attorney's invoices. Do we have a motion?
No.
Go ahead.
Motion for a brief.
Say it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Melander and a second by Commissioner Mathis. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. All right, it's time for public comment, time to talk about anything you want to talk about that's not on the agenda tonight. Mr. Tom Hummel, please come forward.
This issue relates to animal control?
Yes, sir.
I checked with the county and asked them the question, if my exact house was outside of the city, I'm going to say, "Carabel, what would be the change in the taxes I pay to the county?" They said none. I said, "In return, my tax bill would be the same as somebody in the county except I'd have when I paid to Carabel." And they said, "Yes." That made me think of the concept of equal protection under the Fourteenth Amendment. The Carabel County residents, residents of the county that live in Carabel are being discriminated against if we're asked to pay extra money for animal control. You have to have a reason for discriminating against people under the Fourteenth Amendment. I believe that it is, you have to have a rational reason. How can you give different services to people who are residents of the county and pay the same taxes? I think that the conflict perhaps isn't between the city of Carabel and the county commissioners, it's between the citizens of the county that live in Carabel and the county commissioner. And perhaps the attorney could find out if this could be a Fourteenth Amendment issue, and if so, if we could bring suit or whatever other measure there might be against the county on behalf of residents of Carabel who are citizens of this county.
Okay, and thank you for speaking out, Mr. Hummel. I can tell you that I feel the same way you do. I think, I think all the commissioners feel the same way, too. We, I have had extensive studying with some mentors away from this board, and I have communicated with Mr. Hartman regarding that, regarding a special assessment that's being placed on the citizens of Carabel. Have you talked yet with the, we have not paid that fee that they requested yet. And one of the county commissioners is in attendance here tonight as well. Have you spoke with Attorney Schuler yet, Mr. Hartman?
I have, but we have not, I really don't have anything to report, but I have talked to him about this issue.
I, Mr. Hartman can speak to you on it, I can speak to you on it, on the approach that we're going to be taking. I think that we don't want to discuss that at this point until...
It is, obviously, we are looking at it from a city perspect, point of view. I 100% agree with your point of view as well, meaning citizens who are represented by their county commissioner, who pays county taxes, would, I would, you know, would expect a level of service for those taxes, and that's related issue, but it is a little bit different. I mean, we're in little different positions, the city and the citizens.
Would this commission like to direct Mr. Hartman to investigate the Fourteenth Amendment and see if it applies to this situation?
I certainly would.
Okay.
I'll sit.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis, a second by Commissioner Walden, to direct the city attorney to investigate the Fourteenth Amendment, to see if it applies to this special fee that's being assessed on the citizens of Carabel for animal control. All in favor? Any discussion, any further discussion? Any discussion from the audience on that? Because I've had input from so many people on it that are upset. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Hummel, for speaking up. We appreciate it. Yes, sir. And just come on up and tell me your name and all of us for the record, please, sir.
My name's Kenneth Griswold. I work Frank County Parks and Recreation. I've asked the city, I've asked the county, and who is responsible for the parking area at Old Carabel Beach. If any of y'all have been out there in the last month, there's ruts out there and potholes that's two to four foot deep, and I'm just concerned of who will be responsible for any damages that's going to be occurred here shortly when spring break gets here, from this road being as damaged as it is. I've addressed it with the city and I've addressed it with three of our county commissioners. They're going to be addressing the situation.
Okay, what did they say, the county commissioners?
I talked to one, and the issue is, and the last time they was in there, they got chewed out and cussed like dogs from, I don't know if it's the McKissick Property Owners or Homeowners Association or what, but that's why they haven't gotten back in there and done it. So I'm just trying to get some clarity on who is responsible to fix this. I know the county has a trash count down there, and I dump it twice a week, but the i- issues, it's just so bad, somebody's going to be liable when the damages occur to someone's vehicle, and I'm just trying to get this situation addressed. I've spoke with several on it and trying to get it resolved.
Mr. Griswold, we appreciate you kind of go and don't leave yet, because we are working on a McKissick Beach land management plan, and that Gulf Beach Drive is, has been a major item in, in the discussions, in the workshops, and, and working with the individual stakeholders involved there. We're trying to learn who Gulf Beach Drive, what agency owns Gulf Beach Drive. And as far as we know, and, and I actually saw Mr. Josh Adams at the county commission meeting on Tuesday, and he was going to speak with Mr. Marum, but he did instead speak with Mark Currington, and I refer to Courtney because she and I have been working on this with this land management plan. And Mr. Currington says, and he's the historic buff for all of Franklin County, he says that Gulf Beach Drive belongs to Franklin County.
Well, on the platting map, it's shown in the color of Bean County, but last time they was in there, they got cussed like dogs, and they said that they weren't going in there because the people that got onto them said there was part of that McKissick property and all, and that, that they weren't going to do it until there was some clarity on the situation.
I understand that. They don't need to be hassled like that. Now, Ms. Courtney, could we, part of this management plan will include marking off, will it include designating the roadway?
Yes.
And, and we are really trying to get this worked out with those property owners in that area over there.
We were going to mention this later, but there is a meeting here on Monday, the 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00, to discuss the land management plan.
Sounds good. I'll see you then.
If you can come, that would be good, and hopefully you can learn or provide some input. If you have someone else from the county who wants to come and, and help us sort this out, it would be fabulous.
This is more of a personal issue myself. I mean, I wasn't representing the county in any form, shape, form, or fashion.
Okay.
I mean, it's just my concern as a citizen, and as bad as that place is over there, children can get hurt or vehicles can get damaged, and I just don't want the city or the county to have to incur the costs.
Do the commissioners have anything they'd like to say on this item at this point? Okay, all right, well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griswold. We appreciate you coming in. All right, then, is there, is there anyone else? Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I could add just one point of clarity on, what we're talking about is the road running in front of two aisles down to the beach, is that?
Yes.
Not, not the one that runs interior to the, so the one that runs there is, by, by matter of law, is certainly a county road, because they have maintained it in the past. There's a statute to that effect, that they maintain it for a certain period of time. Of course, I think it's about to be short, too, but it's at least seven, vote seven. It's a county road.
It's not in the city limits.
No, it's certainly not, just because it's in the management plan does not make it a city responsibility.
Well, that road is not in the management plan.
Exactly. The road is owned by, maintaining, it's owned by the county. There is, no, that's what it is.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Kelly, it's a pleasure to see you this evening.
Thank you. I think it's beat up on the county commission tonight.
Okay.
I would like to point out to the commission, this week's issue of the paper, David, it's a free commercial. The mayor is featured on the first page, and the story is about her presentation to the commission about the request that the hospital, possibly Sacred Heart Emergency, be located more centrally in the county. I think you'll enjoy reading the article. She represents the city very well, as she always does. My point is, on the back page, after the mayor left the podium, there was a comment made by the county commission chairman, who said, "I think the city should attend to city business, the state should attend to state business, and the county should attend to county business." I took real offense at that. I have been insulted by the county commission, particularly the chairman, more than once, before I was mayor, after I was mayor, and while I was mayor. He fails to understand the decorum that is involved in the importance of the role speaking to him and speaking to the commission. I would like to tell you what I said to the commission yesterday. The current mayor of Carabel spoke before you yesterday. She was told that the city should mind its business and leave the county business to the county. At that point, the chairman interrupted me and said, "I don't want to expose her." I believe that one statement by the commission represents all of the commission if they choose not to intercede on behalf of the rudeness of the spokesperson. I continued my statement, I ignored the chairman, and I said, "I would like to remind the county commission that the city pays city taxes to the county, so therefore the county business is indeed the city business." That's how angry I was. I was angry for our city, I was angry for the way the mayor was treated, I was angry for the way she was dismissed, and I wanted the commission to know that. That's the comment I have.
Well, thank you, thank you for your support, Ms. Kelly. I appreciate it. And I will be describing that incident as well under the mayor's report. Thank you, ma'am. Is there, do y'all have any comments, commissioners? Okay.
None other than I'll report that I was there when the mayor gave her a report, and I was, I was pleased with her report, and I also felt like the comment was unnecessary. Anyway, good report.
Thank you, sir. All right, I see we have Commissioner Burke-Bolt, county commissioner, here this evening. Thank you for coming forward, sir.
I want to speak on behalf of Franklin County Commission, just so you know, that hopefully we all have independent minds and thinking up there, and there's an agenda from time to time that overwhelms sometimes the atmosphere that we're, that we're attending to at the moment. And I just want you all to know that representing this district in this area here, you can be fully assured that I'll be there for you, and I'll be involved, and that you are not alone when it comes to the Franklin County Commission and how we relate to all of our folks in Franklin County, the cities, the county, the land, the concerns, very, very important. Always know, particularly speaking for myself, that I am in access and a pathway for you to the county government. And understand that that is, many times, one individual speaking at the county commission doesn't necessarily speak for all of us that are there at the moment. Be welcome to know that you can be in touch, and we'll make sure that we make any kind of amends we need to do and move forward appropriately for your business. Thanks, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate you speaking up.
You're welcome.
All right, then, is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, the mayor, commissioners.
Aye. Please state your name for the record, that's all, just for the record, because we make an audio recording, which is the official recording, and we can't see you.
My name's Vance Pedrick. What I'm requesting is that I reserve my three minutes for later on, because it's a topic that I know you're going to go in depth with in the meeting, and I really don't want to start it off now in the public, that way it gives you time to get through your agenda.
That's fine. That's very fine. And actually, what we do, we do it a little, we are a little different than the county commission. We have our public comment first on items that aren't on the agenda. Then, whenever we have our items, we allow, have always traditionally allowed the public to speak during discussion on each individual item.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to request that, because I know when we get on a topic, it might be a little bit longer than three minutes, so I wanted to make sure I had that time.
Okay, all right. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, any more public comment? Anything else? All right, we'll move on to the commissioners' reports, and Commissioner Allen? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mathis?
I have, have.
Okay. All right, this is Commissioner Walden and Commissioner Melander.
Okay. Okay, I have a report as usual, and I'm going to start out by reporting on February the 4th. I delivered a message to the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners that included the Carabel City, that the Carabel City Commission would like to see all the residents of Franklin County have adequate, swift, and safe access to health care that is logically located in the center of our county. As well, I delivered a message from numerous citizens of the Carabel community who have sent me tons of emails, and they're, they overwhelmingly prefer a centrally located facility that's managed by Sacred Heart. I asked the county commissioners to consider another referendum in lieu, in view of the two interlocal agreements and the ballot wording in 2008 and the ordinance that followed that ballot, and to consider undertaking another referendum regarding construction of the new hospital in Appalachia Cola. And I also invited them to hold one or two of their county commission meetings here each year in the chambers of the city hall, and bring government to the people as they have always done in the past, but for some reason, in the past couple of years, they, they're not doing that anymore. Unfortunately, during the three and a half minutes I spoke under public comment, and Commissioner Bolt didn't know this, because he's sitting up there beside them, he can't see what they're doing, but three of the commissioners did not look at me at all, and not even for a mere glance. And from that experience, I was able to see their true colors. And as I stood there speaking, while I was representing the citizens of Carabel, the property owners of Carabel, and visitors of Carabel, all who are taxpayers of ad valorem and the 1% sales tax that's going to pay for this new hospital, I could see the disrespect and the disdain for us here in Carabel by these three commissioners, and it became very clear to me. And it's an extremely unfortunate situation. I thought the city of Carabel, myself, this commission, our attorney, had a good relationship with the, with the county commission. And it's, it's really bad that, you know, Commissioner Loughley said exactly what Ms. Mel Kelly said, I won't repeat that, and it's in the newspaper. And I just wonder, have these three commissioners, and have they forgotten the citizens and visitors of Carabel and property owners pay taxes to the county, taxes that are equal to the taxes that are paid by the citizens and visitors and property owners of the unincorporated area of the county? You know, I, I don't know what to say about it. I will say this, that on my way home, I thought about how proud I am of this board, and I've been on this board for quite some time, I've had, sat with other commissioners, a handful of other commissioners. Anytime we have a public speaker, every one of the commissioners, every member on this board pays attention to that public speaker. We don't look down, we don't, we're not taking a power nap or anything, and it's disrespectful. So I, you all have a copy, I had Ms. Keisha make a copy of the message that I gave, but I'm wondering about, now, we're going to have Mr. Hartman discuss on the Fourteenth, I mean, research the Fourteenth Amendment, it applies to the animal control special assessment. I'm wondering, should we have permission or direct Mr. Hartman to review or bring to us where we could discuss the ramifications of withdrawing the, from the interlocal agreement?
Ma'am, mayor?
Or modifying, yes, ma'am.
That subject came up yesterday. There was a meeting, I'm sorry, it's hard for me to stand up.
Okay.
There was a meeting yesterday morning at 10 o'clock, a re-presentation of the alliant opportunity for Franklin County. And toward the end of that presentation, the interlocal agreements came up. It was very difficult to understand the chairman who was in, it was very difficult to understand the chairman particularly, but he raised the issue of the interlocal agreements and pointed out that the two interlocals were not the same.
That's correct.
And that the interlocal agreement for Appalachia specified that the hospital should be in Appalachia. Our interlocal agreement does not specify that. And so, there was nothing further about those, but those were brought up toward the end of that meeting.
And so, I have it home, I didn't bring it, I didn't know we were going to get in this long discussion about it, but the two interlocal agreements are different, the ballot wording is different than what's on either one of the local agreements and the ordinance wording that is, that is by the county commission is a little bit different as well. So, you know, it's, it's just, the folks have been asking me, maybe we should withdraw from the interlocal agreement or at least modify it, of course, that would need some kind of a resolution or something. But, yes, sir.
Oh.
You look like you want to speak.
I do, but I don't know how far we want to go with the interlocal agreement. I'm not opposed to looking at it and seeing where we're at, but I would like to, from my seat, and I think, I can't speak for the rest of the board, I specifically like to speak to Commissioner Bolt, and I think he understands this, that this board's not trying to tend to county business. I'm not trying to tend to county business. However, I, as a citizen and as a commissioner on this board, have a voice equal to every other citizen in Franklin County. A lot of what Franklin County does affects Carabel. A lot of what Franklin County does affects Appalachia Cola, the two corporate cities within this county. So I feel like these two cities have a voice. We are not trying to run, and I think you do understand that, run the county's business. We have enough of our job right here, as you well understand. But we do have a voice equal to, and Carabel has an equal voice equal to everyone else in this county, and that's the message I'd like to send.
And, and Carabel, this, and what you're referring to, the citizens, the property owners, and, and even our visitors here, the citizens and property owners are paying the equal amount of ad valorem tax as, as the citizens and property owners outside the city limits. The visitors here are paying the same 1% additional sales tax as all the citizens and the property owners, and as the visitors that are outside the city of Carabel. And, you know, it's just, I, I don't understand how they can say that we here in Carabel don't have a voice.
And anyway, that's my message, and I hope, I think I'm pretty clear that we, I feel strongly that we have a voice, just like equal to everyone else in this, this county. Now, as far as the two agreements, I personally haven't had the opportunity, and which I will read those two agreements, doesn't mean I'm a professional. And to go back to your question about should we proceed, now, in things transpiring with our health care in Franklin County, I feel like we should stay on top of how it's progressing. And, and with that being said, part of it's going to be looking at these two interlocal agreements that have been agreed to with the county. That's part of the process, but as far as making any changes, I don't know what to say at this point.
I don't either.
I would like to look at it and continue to stay on top of things while the wheels are in motion on the board of county commissioners making a decision on health care for Franklin County.
Now...
May I say it's Commissioner Bolt?
Yes, sir. If I may speak another word?
Yes, sir.
There are, there are multi-layers to decision-making that have to do with a new facility, whatever that might be. One of the most almighty positions that I think is very important in this entire discussion is the Medicare designation of our rural hospital as being a critical access facility. Medicare is saying that we think that health care is so strong in your area and needed that we are giving you a special credential called a, as I understand it, these are my words, a critical access designation, and as a result of that, we're going to give you financial favor as you send us claims for Medicare recipients and so on. And you have a chance with that critical access designation to charges for certain expenses that you have, and there are many legitimate expenses that we can charge for that critical access designation in a document that goes in behind the scenes called a cost report. So, something that you all don't see in the background, and I do as a, you know, I own a physical therapy private practice in Tallahassee, so I'm filing these forms every day with insurance companies called the 1500 day with insurance companies called the 1500 Claim Form. One page, but it's extremely detailed. I've educated our commissioners about that one time and we'll probably do it again. The decision of the hospital and how it revolves is related to that critical access designation. There are only 12 hospitals in Florida that have it, and we are one of them. And I was reminded by one commission that there's about 100 hospitals in Florida that would love to have that. That, that critical access designation is worth millions and millions of dollars to somebody who manages our hospital system. Millions in terms of how our Franklin County folks are referred to hospitals for operations, procedures, and diagnostics alone that they can bill for. So it's very valuable. Also, in Franklin County, there are 1,289 folks, plus or minus, who are insured by Capital Health Plan. Now, that is, it's an interesting number because that's about 10% of our population, but it's probably a greater percentage of our insured population, I'm not quite sure what that is. Capital Health Plan is currently, has Tallahassee Memorial Hospital on their panel of providers. And to my knowledge, so far, Sacred Heart Ascension, I have to look this up, but I don't believe Sacred Heart Ascension is currently able to file claims for Capital Health Plan. So you can see the huge amount of insurance potential we're thinking about here, too. So it's just, it's, it's multi-factors that we have to consider. The interlocal agreement certainly is a covenant that I think the county has had with the cities about how we'll work our hospital at Appalachia Cola versus how we look at the outpatient facility here, Weems East in Carabel. So this is such a multifaceted issue that we have many, many things to think about. But, but I can tell you, the common denominator and foundation on this whole discussion is called that critical access designation by Medicare. And if you move that hospital, I'm, I understand you have to file for a new application for critical access, and that may change the entire game plan of whether we'll get that critical access designation again or not. Also, Franklin County, if I understand it correctly, through a very detailed analysis, turned up as one of the most challenged counties from a healthcare standpoint and from just a general economic standpoint in Florida, and maybe in the United States, I think. And so, the federal government gave Texas A&amp;M University money to come and help provide input and consultation on the best practices for managing our healthcare here in Franklin County, and we had a team of experts come and visit us last week. PhD pharmacist, a PhD medical CPA type person, and the former president of the American Medical Association headed this team up to come to Franklin County and talk about our healthcare issues. So there are many of these tops that are spinning right now as we continue to make these decisions. It is my opinion, and I think I hear the tenor all throughout the county, except in certain areas, that we need to just put the brakes on a little bit and really study this very, very carefully before we make this antsy decision, gotta do it, gotta do it. I can assure you that we have more traction and more acceleration on the discussion of healthcare in Franklin County in the last four or five months than we probably have had in as many years. And please understand, be comforted, that as a county commissioner, I'll make sure that Carabel is watched very carefully, and the entire county is watched very carefully, because I do know the mother tongue language of medicine. I'm not a physical therapist, but I can assure you that what physical therapists do is make doctors look good. And it's all about, in my opinion, medical doctors and physicians. So you, you see all the multiple subjects I've talked about in regard to that?
Yes, sir. We appreciate that, Commissioner.
We'll get through with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
I heard it, but I don't understand why it's got anything to do with building a new hospital or it failed yet.
Okay, all right. We're gonna, yes, sir, Mr. Griswold?
I do got Capital Medical and Sacred Heart does take that insurance.
Oh, very good, that's good to know, and, and as does all, all the city employees use Capital Health Plan.
They do take that insurance, I've been at that hospital on multiple occasions.
Is, is Mr. Sullivan, are you wanting to speak?
The only thing I was gonna say was, you know, Commissioner Boat brought up the Texas A&amp;M team there, and the head of the Texas, the Texas A&amp;M team, they had a slide during their presentation that showed that the critical time to get to a hospital is, the ideal time is 15 minutes, the critical time is 30 minutes. By centrally locating that hospital in the center of Franklin County, most residents would be within 30 minutes. At the far end of the county, where you have to go through downtown parking, a streetlight that people aren't sure of, school district and all that, to get to the hospital now adds a lot of time in, as she said, when I, when I asked her about the central location, she said, it only makes sense, doesn't it?
All right, then, thank you, sir. All right, so Ken, yes, ma'am?
Just two other things. When I mentioned the discussion about the interlocal agreements with the commission yesterday, I believe Mr. Schuler had already left the room. And so, he was not there, he is the county attorney, he was not there to have any input into that. He offered a memorandum of understanding to the commissioners, and they did not seem to be too interested in that, and so consequently, he left the room. The other thing I wanted to say was in regard to the Texas A&amp;M issue, one of the immediate feedbacks from Texas A&amp;M was that the hospital should not be any more than four to six beds at the most with our population base. I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And do we want to ask or direct the city attorney to investigate what the ramifications might be on withdrawal or modify?
Let me ask this of the commission, is that if you all decide on a goal, objective, that sort of thing on this, then I can review the interlocal agreements? There's sort of statutes dealing with interlocal agreements that'll also play into it and certainly give you my opinion or strategize, you know, with you and that sort of thing. But I do need some direction, meaning, I need, I need the intent of, you know, what do you want me to, what is our goal on it?
Yes, sir.
I, I hear some ideas, but I. See if we can sum it up.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct our attorney to review our interlocal agreement with the county concerning the medical aspect and determine our position and determine our status, if you will, of that interlocal agreement, 'cause I have no idea, I've never seen it. Again, I said I'll read it, and I will, but our attorney's gonna make the assessment and direct him to review it and determine the status of where we're at.
Okay, determine the status, all right then. We have that motion by Commissioner Melander to direct the city attorney, attorney to please review the interlocal agreement with the county concerning, concerning our, the local aspect and determine the status, the city's status with the local agreement, the interlocal agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, and that's set, coming from motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Allen.
I'm gonna read that agenda.
It's, it's not. And do we have any more discussion, any further discussion on this one? This, under public comment? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, now, during, I'm still in the mayor's report. During this past month, I received an anonymous letter, which I get anonymous letters from time to time, and I wish people wouldn't really, you know, I could, I could keep their names anonymous if they want to voice a complaint, because now, the way it looks, I could've sent this letter to myself, you know? But I didn't. And it says, "To Mayor Brenda Lopez and all the Carabel City Commissioners and Fire Chief, in accord with the attached Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services brochure, know the law before burning outdoors in Florida." Comma, "Some people in the city of Carabel have been perpetually violating Florida laws for years with no consequences for their illegal activities. Please stop the violations, thanks." And it actually has a brochure from the Florida Forest Service. Here. I've got a lot on my plate, I didn't study it because I know we have someone on this board with experience and expertise, and how many years were you on the Florida Forest Service? Or, a couple of years? Like 30 years? And if you don't mind, I would like to hand you this, since it's addressed, and, and you review, and you take a look, see what you think, make some recommendations to us or to, to Ms. Courtney, you know, and, and try to help us on that.
Legalist, eh?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. So I have one more question for the commission. Back last fall, we had several workshops on the amending our animal control ordinance, and it was pretty much ready, we were just holding on and trying to get a few fines to mirror the county's animal control ordinance. Do we want to go ahead and follow through with that and adopt it with a couple of hearings? We have to have the first and the second hearing.
How many more hearings, sir, do we need?
We would need to, to adopt it as amended ordinance, we would need two, you know, two hearings, first and then a second.
Should I make a motion that we do that?
If you would like to.
I would like to.
Okay, all right then. So we're going to, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen to proceed with adopting the amended animal control ordinance, and, okay. Commissioner Mathis, seconds. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. That's the end of my report, I thank you all very much, we're gonna move to the attorney's report now.
All right, three quick items, let me deal, we're just, two of them quickly, and the third would require some potential consideration, and it's straightforward. The Potika case goes to trial February 17th. Everything's on track, and of course, we'll report back to you at the next meeting as to hopefully help. As far as the claim against the Grantham estate, that is still simply pending. As those things go, probates are very, very slow, and most of them, and there were, there's a number of large claims against the estate, and they have not filed the inventory, as far as I can tell, to let us know if there's, you know, what funds are available and whatnot as far as ability to pay. But we'll, we'll know something when the court gets to us. Finally, the eviction of Little Custom Homes, we had a final hearing on February 3rd, we got an order out of that hearing, and subsequent to that order, yes, actually today, I was in discussion with opposing counsel, and they essentially came around to what I had discussed with them before the final hearing, which is, we hold a $12,000 deposit, a security deposit on that, and obviously, subject to commission approval, that the arrangement would be that we retain that deposit in lieu of past due rent that's been owed, and they then agreed to a final order of eviction and rid of possession in the city's favor, and the city would retain the $12,000 and we're done on that. And it's, we have approximately $17,000, 17,500, of past due rent starting back in October. So, but, we have, we have the deposit to, to credit against that, and, you know, some folks in New Jersey, a company that's essentially never gotten off the ground here. Obviously, it's my recommendation that we, we simply stipulate, we take, we take the security deposit and get ourselves rid of possession and we're done with that case.
I agree with that.
Do we need that motion now, or will that be at?
Actually, if you would, if you would make that motion or approve that settlement in which we take the $12,000 deposit and get our, you know, rid of possession, and we basically are releasing them, we're not chasing them for any additional money, so.
Motion, we accept attorney's recommendation in this situation with the agreement with Little Custom Homes and the eviction ordinance.
I'll second.
All right, we have that motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Allen, is there any further discussion?
They have, you want to pull it down?
Yeah, they didn't want to pay a deposit at all, actually, and we had to really work that out. So is there any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Is that Allen?
Uh, that was Commissioner Melander made the motion, Commissioners Allen made the second. All right then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You, you're a favor.
No, I just got a drink of water.
Okay. All right.
I'll thank God.
All right then, that motion carries, all right. So, you've got like three directives so far.
Yep, that's it for me.
But now, I, I wrote you a note that Police Officer Dan Berugio is, is working on, on, on the vagrant issue, but while he has been doing that, he's received several complaints regarding panhandling going on in the city, which is a new phenomenon, it really is. Well, I've never seen it before until I've seen about the last six months.
And I'll talk to Officer Dan Berugio, but we have had some other issues that were not typical in Carabel. Is it related to that?
I can't tell you if it's related to those untypical issues, I, I don't know, but I do know that I have seen panhandling going on on the site of Dollar General where the, the managers there can't see, you know, where they don't have windows, and I've seen it along Marine Street, and Mr. Officer Dan Berugio wants to know if the city can develop an ordinance, and of course, that would be up to the commission as well, but he asked me to ask you, can the city develop an ordinance that would manage panhandling?
I would think we can, I mean, I know it's done in other places in Florida. I also know there's restrictions on, on it, but I'm pretty positive that you can restrict that, the, and, and so, I can certainly, if the commission directs me to, before the directive, I can come up with a draft for consideration, just kind of consideration before you decide on the head.
Okay. Now, I did discuss one thing with Mr. Officer Dan Berugio, that I believe that people, I'm thinking, I don't know for sure, I'm not the attorney, if a person is panhandling on private property, say, on the IGA property or on the Dollar General, I don't know, can we make an ordinance against that, or would the ordinance be only when this panhandling is happening on public property, right away?
I, I need to educate myself, because it may be that the owner of the business needs to trespass them and force them back out to public, and, and I, I know Tallahassee's pretty liberal as far as homeless panhandling folks, but it doesn't matter, how it's, it doesn't matter, I'll, I'll gonna find out, I gotta look around. I know different jurisdictions are more or less stringent about panhandling, some places they cannot panhandle, and other places they can.
Well, I would suggest to the commission, instead of Mr. Hartman developing a draft ordinance at this point, just for him to research, I'm just suggesting now, research and see where does this jurisdiction lie with, with an issue like that, you know, is it just in public space and then right away in public parks and such? And, and let him report back to us at the, the next meeting. Is that all right?
Good idea.
All right, well, let's, let's have a motion to, are you okay, Mr. Adlerstein?
He's kinda. Yeah, I'm just thinking, don't arrest people.
Okay.
Don't arrest people for being poor.
All right. Let's, let's have a motion to direct Mr. Hartman then to just research and see where our jurisdiction would lie on that.
I will, I'll.
Okay. Do you want a motion for that?
Nope.
Okay, all right. You got enough? All right. Anything else for Mr. Hartman? Okay, we're gonna move on to Ms. Courtney's report, our city administrator.
I just want to let everyone know that the Marine Street restocking is complete.
Looks good.
Looks good. Everyone I've talked to's been really happy with that. Also, we have a road, a street and road department job that's out right now for advertisement. They're due in on the 13th, and we want to ask to have a special meeting for September the 20th to go ahead and hire for that position instead of waiting until our next meeting.
September? You said September. You don't have a September.
No, February. No, February.
You're taking after me now.
My daughter's birthday, September twentieth. I'm very twentieth.
Well, we do need to hire before September the twentieth. We need to hire as soon as possible, as soon as the deadline is of the applications. But I would suggest here again that if we have qualified applicants, that we go ahead and hire for two.
Agreed.
Two streets and roads employees. But we would probably need, I would request that in the form of a motion that we go ahead and if they're qualified applicants, to hire two streets and roads employees at this time.
Well, let me see how you want to do that because she's requesting a meeting on the twentieth and thirtieth.
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that if there are qualified and adequate applicants to try to fill the vacant position that we currently have and the position that we approved in our budget in October on the twentieth. We can fill both of those positions. If not, we'll re-advertise and go ahead and try to fill that position that we approved in our budget back in October.
One question.
Wait now, let's have a second, then we'll have discussion.
That's reasonable, I'm not. Okay, go ahead.
All right.
And that's on the twentieth?
Yes.
Well, I need to motion, we need to have a motion to hold a second, a special meeting as well.
Separate motion?
I think so. What do you think?
However, no one will do.
Okay. All right, so you're making two.
Well, yeah, I need to add something to that.
I know, and I need to add something to it as well. Separate then.
Okay, we'll do a separate.
Okay, all right. I need a sec. All right, so we need, do you have Commissioner Melander's motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second on that regarding hiring an additional employee?
I'll say.
Okay, all right, so we have that motion by Commissioner Melander and second by Commissioner Mathis. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Benz, these jobs require you to be popping the cracks and certified. Are we going to hire them? Because it could be months before they have the next class to get these guys because they have to go through a background check. So we need to make, check whether to pop the cracks and find out when their next school's going to be so they can get these guys certified. Or don't we just going to hire them and they can't go out and pick their names?
That's correct.
And it's going to be a pretty, you know, serious background check with these guys too, so we won't let you go. Keep that down, it's always hard, yeah.
I did ask Courtney and Dustin to please follow up with the DOC to see when their next class is. And will they have to have a background check before we can hire them? The DOC should do it, an extensive background check. Yes, Mr. Commissioner Melander?
No, I was just repeating about the background check.
Okay, so we won't be able to, and so that's why we're putting it off to the twentieth so they'll have time to do that background check.
There might be some guys out there that's already certified or I want the job, there won't be a problem. But let's see.
Okay.
So just keep that in mind, they're going to have to be certified.
I know it.
Okay.
To put them to work, to get the productivity we're expecting.
Yes.
Well, they would be on probation, so if they weren't paid for the past.
And even if we, in my opinion, even if we have to hire someone that is not currently certified, we still can get work out of those folks while they get their certification on probation. As the clerk said, they're on probation. If they don't get their certification, that job's turned.
We can contact Chris Wilson, he's over at all the training out there, and he might expedite it, Benz, we need to get these guys to work. I said, you might need to call him, he does the training. I know it's kind of be, do a lot of, set for one, two people, but he might do it. We might just do it. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to have a special meeting on the twentieth as requested by the city administrator for the purpose of this hiring. What time would you like to have the PNCs that day?
Is it that day?
Twentieth, two o'clock?
I think.
So twenty? Do you think it would be more than an hour?
Well, see, I have something else, but since we didn't amend the agenda, I can't say what I need to say till we get to the new business item two.
Keisha has another item off.
I know, we need to have one, two, three items on the twentieth, and I don't show a PNC meeting.
We, that is the third Thursday, so that would be the scheduled PNC. I don't know of anything that's going to be on there. They basically have one week to turn something in, but.
I always put it on my calendar.
Do we want to hold it like at ten o'clock in the morning?
We could, you know.
That's great.
Now, we have a motion, but we don't have a second.
I'll say.
Okay, all right, now, do we want to hold it? Thank you, Commissioner Mathis.
Twentieth at ten AM.
Okay, but now what, okay, now we're in discussion. We have other items that we need to put on this, but we haven't, but now your item is going to be a different meeting.
I need to have a board of adjustment hearing for a code enforcement case to take action because I'm not getting, I'm not getting anything with the homeowners, so.
But that would be a different, that's going to be a different motion for a different meeting, directly after the special meeting. Okay. So then, attorney, sir, there's another item that we need to put on this, but we're not coming to it until later.
I don't think, I don't think that matters. I think you can simply add items to that meeting, add to the agenda of that meeting as long as you block out that space and time, just mention that under the different items as they come up. So we'll add that to the special meeting on this date at this time.
All right, all right, so then we have a motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Mathis to hold a special meeting on February the twentieth at ten AM?
Twenty seasons over, I beat it.
Ten AM, okay. For the commission to approve staff's hiring recommendations.
Well, really generically, as Dan said, whatever business that we have on the agenda.
Okay, all right, there, whatever business we need to put on the agenda throughout this business.
Sorry, I would announce what that business is at this meeting because that's public notice.
We will, then it's closed. We can't put any more items on the agenda.
Okay.
And then my last thing.
We didn't vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, okay?
My last thing is not something that we really need to vote on, but just to make you guys aware that like the mayor just read out a letter regarding illegal fires, Keisha's asking for code enforcement, a public hearing for code enforcement. Our code enforcement complaints are way up. I think last month you heard us have discussion and we went out into a certain neighborhood and we code enforced five or six properties out there. Was it the month before that or maybe even November, but we went out and we did another massive code enforcement. This month already, just this week, we're doing six code enforcements on Georgia Avenue and Green Rivers Road. So we're getting a lot of complaints. The people living in these neighborhoods are tired of seeing this trash and they're very upset. They're coming in, they're irate, they're upset. So it's just Keisha and I doing code enforcements and we try our best to keep up with them, but like she said, they're having public hearings or board of adjustment meetings and when they don't comply, then we have to get the attorney involved and we have to go to court with that, so that's just something for y'all to think about.
And it's difficult. I've been here, on the last one, when a lady came forward, came in, I was on my way out, but I went back in, we talked with her and she was just enraged, she was red in the face. And I get phone calls myself, that's why I bring things to you. I've had people call me and call me and call me and complain they want mandatory garbage, that's why we're going to be, it's on the agenda and why I brought it up. And they're calling me on the phone, just, you know, yelling at me. And I have no idea what's going on around their house until I can get them calmed down and then go out and see. And they're getting a backlog of complaints. I mean, people have really complained.
Usually they come in with one or two complaints, but now they're coming in with a list saying, not all of these people have code enforced. I believe Keisha got another list this week. Some of them overlap, some of them were the same properties, but this is.
And you can't turn them away, just like when people request for items to be on the agenda, you can't turn them away, they have a right. So I'll just ask y'all, you know, we put, for a couple of years, we put money in the budget for a part-time code enforcer. Are we ready to address that or we just see how staff is able to handle the workload?
Well, I mean, they're not going to like what I got to say, but I think we may be going through a spurt here of overload, maybe not. Maybe, I mean, I think the ladies are doing an excellent job handling the volumes coming through. Not saying that it would have to continue, we may have to address that in the future. But maybe we're just going through a spurt here because we're going to talk, as you said, about mandatory garbage collection and we've been talking about these issues and different things. And they have, I know these ladies have done a lot of work already and there's lots you get behind them. And hopefully, it's like that. If they don't, then I'd be in favor of addressing part of what you described in there. But, and I'm not trying to pacify you, but I'll tell you honestly, I think y'all are doing a really good job of keeping up with it.
And I'd just like to say too, a lot of times they make complaints and we go out and look at it and we don't think it's a justified complaint. What some people think is a code enforcement complaint, other people may not.
That's true.
It's all subjective.
That's just my view.
They called me too, but they think what they called me.
Oh, you missed.
Okay, well, do y'all, is there anything else, Ms. Courtney?
I don't have anything.
Okay, do y'all have any questions for our city administrator?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, we thank you. And then we'll move on to our city clerk, Ms. Keisha.
The, we need to hold a special meeting, as we talked about earlier, for the DEP grant, the land management, McKissick Beach Land Management Plan. We need a workshop on February the tenth from five to seven.
And that is scheduled already and we're advertising.
Right, it's scheduled and we just are announcing it with the public knowledge. So that's February tenth from five to seven here at Carabelle City Hall.
Keisha, I don't, I will not be able to. I don't have that.
It's a workshop. Yeah, it's that ongoing land management plan and I just want to send out a plea to all of our citizens that are here. We had a workshop January fifteenth or somewhere and we had no citizens. And this is regarding Old Carabelle Beach and it's very important for the citizens to come and speak up and have input on how they would like for this land management plan to be developed.
And it's not a city meeting like we sit up here. It is the ARPC and a mediator and they're just taking input.
And that is, that is a large area, the McKissick Marsh and then the beach out there, the old Carabelle Beach area that goes out to the point, that is all owned by the Division of State Lands, but back in 2008, the city of Carabelle leased it and for how long? Ninety-nine years? And so, but part of that lease agreement was that the city developed a land management plan and the, we didn't have the money to hire a consultant to do it, the city didn't. And finally, the DEP gave us a $75,000 grant. And so the plan is being developed and it includes certainly things like environmental protection. And everyone is in agreement that they want to continue with environmental protection, but as far as like Mr. Rizwal brought up, the roadway out there, who does it belong to? Is it going to continue to be allowed to be used as a parking lot? Is it going to be cut off for public access for all of us to go out there and walk the beach? And, you know, are there going to be public restrooms that the citizens here will have to fund to maintain? All that kind of stuff would be included, is included in a land management plan. So just to give you an idea. Okay, all right, Ms. Keisha.
That's all I have.
Now, don't we need to schedule a board of adjustments?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. We need to have a board of adjustments. We can do it at the same day as the February twentieth meeting. The city commission acts as the board of adjustments, but it is our enforcement action for the code enforcement cases. And this is the, I believe it's 408 Tenth Street up here. I've been working on that since, I believe, October.
Mr. Harris, when Mr. Harris came in.
So I've been, and we've had it, can be, we need to take action.
And so would you like to hold that board of adjustment meeting immediately after our special meeting on the twentieth of February?
Yes.
Okay, can we have a motion for that now?
I make a motion today.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Mathis and a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. Do y'all have any questions for Ms. Keisha? Is there anything else, Ms. Keisha?
Oh, no.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to staff report, well, no, Mr., yes, Mr. Russell Larch with the Nubia.
This way, Paul.
You always do that.
I think one of these days I'll ask my husband to review.
I know a guy.
All right, I'll be, I'll be trying to be brief with our, with our projects. The DOT Scope Project, known as the Hill, we had a public community awareness meeting that was held on January 28th. As small, turned out about 10 people, all were very supportive of the project. We'll be scheduling the pre-application meetings with permanent agencies next week. And roadway design is underway, we're generating profiles and cross-sections at this point. So that, that project is moving in. On the Lighthouse Estates, Sepic Sewer Phase One and Two, the design survey for the phase two portion, the field work for that is done and the office work is being completed. So we'll expect to have that soon. And then we're incorporating a low-pressure sewer design for both, to include both of those phases. On the water side, the, that design is also subject to receiving the survey for Phase One and Two. On the St. Joe Summer Kent Water Sewer System feasibility study, we expect to complete a draft report for that and I'd like to schedule a meeting with Courtney next week to review that with her. Drainage improvements at Avenue A and Southeast Fifth Street, we're designing the swell and disc blocks there and a closed pipe system. At this point, we're about 30% complete, we're continuing with that design. The master water and sewer system maps, we're 100% complete on that. The next step on that is to sit down with Charlie and look at all the line work that we are showing on those maps and make sure everything's included and correct, correct sizes, et cetera. That would be the next step there. Not on the list, but I wanted to make sure I brought it up, is the County Road 67 and Tallahassee Street sidewalk project. The county bid that project is over the budget amount, over the grant funding amount. We have coordinated with DOT and Franklin County and what we will do at this point is scale that project back in order to meet the grant amount. And we've coordinated with Mark Kirton at the county and if any of you would like to see, I have, have what we're proposing to scale back with me and I can review that with you after the meeting or at a break if you have one. And we'll be, we'll be doing that at no cost.
You know that was going to be my question. Thank you, thank you so much.
We're just going to make it up.
All right, I appreciate that. And all the commissioners, I will say, they appreciate it too. I don't know if they know the whole story or not, but we're very glad. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's any way we can help you, please let us know. Do y'all have any questions for Mr. Larch?
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to say Courtney and I, in our water and sewer department meeting, talked with Mr. Charlie about the assessment. talked with Mr. Charlie about the assessment, asset management assessment, and he says that's going very well, they're pleased, all the lift stations and the fire hydrants and everything's been checked, and the treatment plants, and everything's coming out well.
Very good.
Okay, then, on the drainage improvements at A and Southeast Fifth, as soon as you can get that, because I'm anxious to know what that's gonna cost, because we've got some other street areas that we need to repair, and we need our log money to be able to, you know, apply that to some other areas if we've got extra money.
Okay, all right, and I think I can give you an estimate on what that will be ahead of the completion of the plans, but understand that we need it completed.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do y'all have any further questions for Mr. Larch? All right, then, we're gonna move on to waterfront partnership.
Thank you, Keisha, I believe you all received in your packets the report for this month for the activities of the Carabel Waterfront Partnership, one of the most important things we did this month was to host a meeting with our group, the mayor, and representatives from F W C concerning their derelict vessel program, and we'll be discussing that as an agenda item later, so I will not get into that at this point. I did want to tell you that there is going to be a very important meeting on February 14th at 2:30 in the afternoon for representatives from the State Historical Preservation Office, they have pulled together a team of all the various programs that could possibly benefit Carabel, and they're sending the representatives down to meet with people in the community who are interested in historic preservation, there are a number of business owners who have historical properties that are interested in getting markers from the state marker program, there are a number of people that are interested in getting national, nationally-recognized landmark, markers from, from the feds, and there are a number of other funding programs in historic preservation, including various grants that they're gonna come and talk to us about, and it would really be helpful if, if you all could possibly fit it into your schedule to come by, it's gonna be at Rio Carabel, and there's an effort, the Historic Waterfront District Initiative that's being done by Romei and Michael Pace, and several of the business owners in that area, in conjunction with the Carabel History Museum and the Historical Society, so I think that is probably the most important thing on our agenda, I do have a couple of things to tell you, I put on the back table the handout, the fact sheet about the derelict vessel program that the commissioners all received, but if anybody in the public would like to look at it during the discussions, I left the 10 copies on the back table. Also, have, the most immediate thing is that the February talk for the History Museum is gonna be on the fort at Prospect Bluff, which is what we call Fort Gadsden, but it was called the fort at Prospect Bluff during the War of 1812, when the British had a fort there, and that fort turned into the largest African-American community in the United States at that point in time, and it is a remarkable story, how it came to be, and then the very, very sad occurrence when a gun, a cannon shot hit the magazine for the fort and blew all, almost all of the 350 residents, blew them all up, but there's been new evidence and artifacts that have been discovered, and for Black History Month, that's gonna be, our program will be at Sea Quarters on the 15th, day after Valentine's Day, from 10:00 to 12:00, and that will be free, and then there's also a little flyer reminding you to save the date for the Carabel Culture Crawl, this will be the third one that the History Museum has sponsored, it's March 21st, and that's when we have costume characters on the street, we have music, we have public art, we have lots of things having to do with food funds and entertainment going on along with history on March the 21st, so those are our announcements for projects that we're working on right now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Tamra, does anyone have questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tamra, okay, we thank you so much, and then next up is our, there's no Economic Development Council report this evening, we actually have to call their meeting on the 13th. Okay, and then our Carabel Aviation Advisory Board, Mr. Tim Sullivan.
Good evening, everyone, just got a few things on here, pretty simple, the fence project is, the bids will go out, I mean, the bid package is what will go out tomorrow, so, is that a 15-day, I'm not sure what the time period is, but hopefully, we'll see some action in 30 days of beginning that project. The fuel system, there was a down payment that was required that Miranda sent in last week, it's been received, and the parts have been ordered, so it's a two-week lead time, so we're expecting to see that finished within three weeks, the new installation. The master plan, I met with the mayor and city administrator and Zach from Kimley Horn to go over the final master plan that's been approved by F D O T, and the airport layout plan, and they plan to come here in March and make a presentation to you all and show you the final product. Big news, the apron, airport apron is, is complete, they finished the striping this morning, Kimley Horn made a report to the F D O T headquarters in District 3, explained the whole process that we went through to get to where we're at, and they replied, they had a very positive reply that congratulated us for it, and congratulated the city for all that we went through with it. We're on, standing now with F D O T, Courtney and Miranda were able to get all the paperwork caught up with them, so we're, we're ahead of the game now, we've got all the projects done, and in the presentation, March, you'll see, you'll be very pleasantly surprised with the next four or five years look like.
Do y'all have questions for Mr. Sullivan?
Just like I said, the apron looks great, so if I get a chance to ride out there and look at it, and they did it.
It came off great.
It's beautiful, and I want to say, I want to thank you and the board members there, and Ms. Courtney, for perseverance with Duke Energy to get that done, it was hurricane damaged during staging damages after Hurricane Michael, when they brought in huge vehicles and tampers and trucks, and just anything you can think of, semi-trucks, and our little ramp area out there, and apron area built for small aircraft, general aviation just couldn't handle the tonnage, and, but it took some perseverance, and Duke Energy made excellent repairs.
And they said they would, when they left, we'd be happy, and we're happy.
Okay, all right, so, very good, how does it feel, have you drove on it?
It's excellent, taxiing the airplane, no, it's excellent, we didn't really realize how bad it was until it was done and taxied around there.
It feels good to, you know, the car, my vehicle, you know, it's nice and smooth, very good, thank you, all right, okay, so, that's that, we're, we need to have a, do we want to have a break here, or do we want to keep going for a little bit?
Let's go a little bit further.
All right, Commissioner Walden usually dictates when we have breaks, so he's told me to keep it down. No, this next one won't take long, but what we have to do, since it's a board of adjustment issue, I need a motion for an adjournment of the regular meeting in order that we may convene the board of adjustment.
So, move.
Okay, okay, that's by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Walden, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries, and now we are going to have discussion and possible action regarding granting a .46-foot rear setback variance for Ms. Ola Riley at 212 Avenue High.
All right, if we could, and I think staff is handling this, there's a little bit of a procedure for variances, we'll make it quick, but if maybe Keisha could describe what's being requested, it's the nature of the application.
So, they have a 50 by, it's a 100.54 lot, they need the .46 in the rear because the trailer is 16-foot wide, so they need the .46, a little less than a half of a foot in order to meet their setbacks.
And Courtney, as the administrator, has the obligation to review, there's required findings under, variance section is 12.02.00, then under section 12.02.04, there's required findings A through J that Courtney reviews and make sure that it's compliant with it, and have you reviewed those?
Okay, and I see Ms. Lisa Riley has signaled me, yes, ma'am?
Oh, that's mine, I'm over.
Excuse me. Well, I got the Riley part right, okay, did you want to speak?
No.
Okay, I thought you were waiting to speak, okay. It is a Zone 3, it's a Zone 3 mobile home, so it just needs that .46.
I'm moving to accept the variance.
All right, okay, and that's a motion by Commissioner Melander to accept that .46-foot variance, and second by Commissioner Mathis, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries, and I've been eyeballing that mobile home, manufactured home up in Medar, and I'll be looking for it.
Yeah, Slams' packet won't move it unless they redraft it up there.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, it's for Miranda, I've already bought it, my grandkids.
The neighbors are happy to see you come. All right, now, what we need is a motion to adjourn, we're finished with the board of adjustment, we need a motion to adjourn. Okay, and what, now I want to re-convene the commission meeting.
And re-convene the commission meeting.
Okay, all right, so, all right, so we have that by Commissioner Allen, and the second by Commissioner Mathis, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, or move it forward, Ms. Keisha?
Let's go.
All right, item two, item two has been removed because Ms. Caroline Steth did not want to travel in this bad weather, and so, she wants to come on our February 20th meeting to present the Competitive Florida Grant that's offered by the D E O, and she did say that this grant is gonna be similar to all of our other grants, that she'll work directly with Courtney and do the templates and, you know, like we've been doing, working with Josh on the land management plan, so.
And this is the third, everything done for.
So, I would like a motion to add this to the special meeting.
To the special meeting?
Yes, she's gonna come, I've talked to her and asked her if she could attend when we have our special meeting.
Have we got enough time for that?
At 10 o'clock in the morning, we will have time. Her presentation won't be, won't be 15 minutes.
Make the motions be tabled as items to the 20th at our special meeting. Second.
Okay, and we have that by Commissioner Melander, tabled to the special meeting at the 20th, and second by Commissioner Mathis, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, all right. Item three, discussion and possible action regarding a Jordan Bayou Site Plan Amendment, and Ms. Keisha or Mr. Attorney, do you want to tell us about that?
I didn't get that second, I don't know.
We have Commissioner Melander and Commissioner Mathis.
The Jordans Bayou Site Plan, they had, it's, it was very specific, and it had where their pool house or their common area was, and it was located in a stricter flood zone, so they asked for an amendment of the site plan to put it in a less restrictive flood zone, so it's just a one lot.
And did the P and Z meet on this one?
Yes, and I wasn't at it.
Right, P and Z, Matt, there was some discussion regarding the use of that office, and it was to be used for leasing, and basically, the uses that it was discussed as far as clubhouse and that sort of thing, and it was recommended approval, there were no conditions applied, it was recommended for approval by the P and Z.
All right, then, so this is a clubhouse, and there had been rumor that it was going to be a sales.
Make sure it was not.
No, it's not, it's a, this will be a managed rental community.
And that's covered.
Property management office mailboxes.
Yeah.
That's, that's specifically stated in their put ordnance, that there is no commercial.
Yeah, and they're aware of that. All right, then, so do we want to consider a motion to approve or disapprove?
I move to approve.
Okay, Site Plan Amendment is moved to approve by Commissioner Allen, is there a second?
I'll second.
And that's second by Commissioner Mathis, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, or move it forward, Commissioner Walden?
Gotta write this last one.
Now, this is gonna take a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's time to go.
All right, all right, we're taking, we are taking a recess right now, I call for five minutes and it ends up being 10, but y'all take a little break. All right, then, we're going to reconvene the regular city commission meeting here on February the 6th, 2020, and we're going to begin back with item four under new business, discussion and possible action regarding the city participating in the F W C Derelict Vessel Removal Grant Program, and right off, I want to thank Ms. Tamra for volunteering to help organize and oversee this difficult program, and for hosting on the 15th, the Waterfront Partnership, and she, you invited Captain Wood and Lieutenant Cook from the F W C, and then to our surprise, and we were thrilled to have Phil Horning there, who's the F W C Law Enforcement Planner for the entire state of Florida, and Mr. John Harris invited him, and he was most helpful. So, Tamra and I worked on this, this list here, and I want to make sure you all have it, and we're not really gonna formally distribute it, it shouldn't be, until we decide whether or not we want to undertake this program, the steps have to be followed carefully, yesterday we had Mr. Benay Bose, I believe that was yesterday, he, he didn't understand all of these steps, and he right away sent his application in, and he'd already contacted his marine salvage company to come in, and, you know, he was in contact with Mr. Horning, and Mr. Horning doesn't, you know, that was okay, he handled it, but he wants a, one point of contact, and we'll get to that point in just a moment, that issue, but there's several steps, as we all know, that you have to jump through hoops to get grants, there were six vessels identified, and then, since then, I have talked to Bill Mickler with the Organization for Artificial Reefs, and he tells me that the barge and tug that's out there, we don't know for sure if it's on the county Timber Island Boat Ramp, Timber Island Road Boat Ramp, if it's docked at the county's property, or if it's docked at Sunset Isle, but he did tell me that the barge is gonna be used to develop the Buddy Ward Reef at Sykes Cut, so not to worry about that, but that the tug was full of oils and fuel and all of that good stuff that's gonna make it very expensive to, they can't use it for a reef, and it's gonna be very expensive to salvage because of all of the hazardous materials that are in it, and so, they're trying to find out right now, who, if that belongs to the county, then if it's on county property, the county will have to make a complaint, if the, if it's on Sunset Isle property, then Sunset Isle homeowners will make a complaint, what it is, is each of these property owners must make a complaint, and they, they will contact contact Lieutenant Cook, and he will assign an investigating officer to come out and see the vessels, and they may even put a dive team down to see how many are out in front of the old Tom Crome Ice House, you know, just to verify, they're going to have to probably put a dive team out at the one that's on the southern pier of the Tilly Miller Bridge on the downstream side, so, anyway, we had Mr. Don England came to the meeting with the Waterfront Partnership, John Harris, and then some, a couple of the Waterfront Partnership volunteers, but all of the upfront cost, any, any work that's done, organizational work, project management, environmental reviews, if they're required, permitting that's required, getting the, organizing the bid process, and of course, awarding the bids will come here, but all of that has to be done before, also, each, each property owner that has a derelict vessel has to contact, like I said earlier, Lieutenant Cook, investigating officer will investigate, each vessel owner has to be notified and served a notice of rights, and then the vessel owner has the opportunity for due process to file a complaint that they, because what happens is, if the taxpayers, F W C grant money is actually taxpayer money, if the taxpayers end up having to fund removing these vessels, the owner not only loses his right or her right to have another vessel in the state of Florida, they lose their driver's license in the state of Florida, so they have the opportunity to process to get that boat out themselves, or file a complaint, and say that it's not their fault, that it was someone else's fault, whatever, and the boat, the property owner must sign a notarized affidavit that that boat is at their dock without their permission, so, but the property owner must sign, must contact the F W C, file the complaint, and after all of the investigation is done, that property owner will be issued a, trying to remember a lot here, a removal authorization letter from the F W C, and it will have all of the numbers and vessel number and make and model, everything, it's an official document, that is what, if Ms. Tamra organizes this thing, she will have to collect, she will have to have this, this will have to be submitted with the grant application, with anything else that's required by the, this 12-page grant guidelines and the eight-page application. She'll make that application with Courtney and me, we'll probably all work on it together, but that can't be done until we've got bids, and we'll have to reach out and try to find three qualified marine salvage companies, and you want to give references because they may come, and what happened with the county, they hired Honda Enterprises in 2016, and they had to pay, the agreement was, each vessel that was retrieved or salvaged, the county had to pay after each vessel, so the county's money was invested upfront, they could not request for reimbursement until the whole project was done. We, at that time in 2016, I asked Mr. Carrington to please get Honda Enterprises to just give us an estimate of what, the three vessels we had at that time, just so we can know, and I may have mentioned this to you before, but the, the one on the southern pier up against the Tilly Miller Bridge is 25,000, Anthony Diane is going to be 42,000, Ms. Carabelle is 37,000, and that was back in 2016, and now we have the two more, or three more, and then we've got possibly a tug that we might be dealing with, so it's going to be, you know, $200,000 without the tug, and if, if the city is paying after each removal, now, but we can't submit the grant, the reimbursement until the whole project's finished, we need to make sure we have a qualified, dependable marine salvage company, and it's going to be, because if they walk out, they do have the project, we paid them to have the project, if they leave, then we're not going to be able to get reimbursement, it's very important that we give references, and it can be, and Mr. Horning, he couldn't really, he can't advise, that would be against ethics, so, but he kind of, he'll, he'll help us, and Mr. Carrington can help us because they, he's been through this already, and we've gotten some references already, so, but it's going to be important that the chain of command is outlined to the property owners, because, for instance, Mr. Bose then called me yesterday afternoon and told me, no, the city doesn't have to invest money, I've already found a marine salvage company that won't charge us till the job is done, you know, it can't be, we all know how big the bidding process has to go through the city. So, Ms. Courtney has said that she would prefer that the job be done as one bulk bundled project, and she says that would be easier for her office, since she's going to be managing, and she would be at the head of the chain of command, and she's going to have to submit the application, and if we get, we're probably going to have to have a couple of agreements drawn up with the N P O that's going to be helping to organize it, and that, you know, the city's going to have money invested there that we cannot recoup, but what we would do, what Ms. Tamra has offered to do, and I guess Courtney, and this is a great, you know, great opportunity to help clean up the river, but it's going to take a lot of volunteer work, and Ms. Tamra said it may take a year before we get it done because of all of the investigations that have to go on, and notice of rights and due process, so, and I think it might take a year as well, and the property owners are going to, you know, they're anxious, but it's just how government works. Do you want to provide input?
Yes.
Okay, and she's going to need a microphone.
I was just, I was just starting to say, why don't you tell them about something, but I think I will, the Waterfront Partnership will be glad to, we've been working on trying to get this done for over 10 years, and it's just because we've got these changes in the regulations from, from F W C that we're able to consider doing it now, and the good news, which we didn't mention yet, is that they've also changed the financial management division procedures in Tallahassee, so from the time we submit a bill, they have to have us paid back, or paid within 30 days, so it won't be like we've experienced in the past where sometimes it takes six months to a year to get your money for something, it will be, and that's one of the advantages of doing it as a one, one whole thing at the same time, is that you won't be out little pieces, well, forty, about forty and sixty thousand dollars is not little pieces of money, but you won't be out increments of money, you'll just be, it'll be like a million, it'll be a hundred thousand dollars, and you'll, or 200,000, then you'll get it back immediately.
And it depends upon if the contract with the salvage company, how that ends up, if they want to give paper, and then how fast they move.
And we'll be glad to take as much work off of city staff as we possibly can, and try to create as much of the required paperwork as possible.
And I would say if this commission decides to move forward, then that you should call another meeting with the special section with these property owners, and, and, you know, really outline, and outline the chain of command, and exactly how it's got to go, we know, we all understand it, but regular people that haven't been so involved don't understand all the ins and outs of it, and then that they need, it is their duty to contact Mr. Lieutenant Cook and make a complaint, so he can begin a investigative procedure, and then since the, there's two boats that we know of, the one against the pier, and then the one by the 12th Street Pier, that are just in city waters, or, well, state waters, but within the city jurisdiction, and the city will have to make the complaint on those two, so, and if there's another one, well, I don't know, we can't see it right now, so what do you all think?
Great idea.
I'd like to move forward.
Need a motion?
Well, let me just ask Ms. Tamra one more time, what do you think? One thing about it, if we get into it, and we really don't have money invested until that marine salvage company gets here.
That's right, absolutely, we, I, I think it's a no-brainer at this point, if we find out at some point in the future that it's not fiscally feasible, then we'll, we'll have, we'll come back and let you know that.
Then we can't handle it.
Yeah.
It might be, it might be too big that we can't handle it.
Well, I think they're putting, they're putting a million dollars a year into this fund, and so even if, you know, something happens and we don't get it in right away, we'd still, I don't think it'll be, I think we'll be, and they have to spend the money at various places, they can't spend it all in the Keys, for example, so, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for the city.
What they did, they, you know, it was, they would fund derelict vessels, sunken vessels removal, but if they were tethered to a dock, public or private, they wouldn't fund it, even if the vessel was there without permission, but they changed that, you know, people, and even myself, every time we had a legislative delegation meeting, we were asking them, please address this, and so they did, and so, well, let's have a motion then, if we want to move forward.
Make a motion, we continue to move forward with the derelict vessel removal within our river, as discussed.
Okay, do we have a second, or sir? That motion is by Commissioner Milander, second by Commissioner Walden, any more discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I know this is probably naive, but what is to prevent nothing, the next vessel that isn't enumerated right now, is there any value, for example, in organizing a meeting of riverfront property owners who could be advised about these latest changes, that they have a right to police their property and request removal, I'm, I'm not sure where, but, but, you know, it's wonderful, and if by some miracle, all these vessels are now gone, they weren't there five years ago or 10 years ago, and what's to prevent the next crop?
That's what we call at-risk vessels.
Yeah.
And that is up to the F W C, and Mr. Powless and I have been over to meet with Captain Cook several times, that is up to the F W C to monitor these at-risk vessels, and then if they're on private, docked in private docks, that's up to the dock owner, the property owner, to monitor those vessels, and if it's a vessel that's not supposed to be there, then they need to call the F W C, just like if a car was parked in your driveway, and you would call the police, this car doesn't belong here, they, they need to.
Well, that, that was my point, and I'm not looking for more work for the Waterfront Partnership, but maybe at some point, a property owners' meeting along the river could be organized, and they could be advised of, of that, some of them are absentee owners, they don't know.
But we have asked the F W C to please, you know, police these derelict vessels, and, and.
But they're not always derelict, you know, yet.
Yeah, and so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and any more discussion?
I got a question, mayor.
Yes, sir.
Hey, the tug and barge you're talking about, or the tug?
I could understand what you're saying.
The tug you're talking about with the fuel and oil on it?
Yes, sir.
Is that commercial? Vessel?
That belonged to Mr. Ben Withers, who has passed away, and, and, I, is that?
The reason, the reason I'm getting into it, and I hear a lot about F W C and all that, but if it's fuel, oil, and it's sinking, and it's polluted, Coast Guard Central Mobile has a whole division, a marine safety office, that regulates all the fuel, oil, and sunken vessels, it might be another avenue for you to plug into, and see on a federal level what you have in that row.
Okay, thank you, I don't believe it's sinking at this point, it has some pictures of sinking.
But if it's leaking at all, at least their inspectors can go on and inspect it, and see whether it's safe and all that.
Okay, that would be good, is someone from your home, this gentleman here is from the Sunset Isle Homeowners Association, is someone working with the F W C on that tug and barge?
Yes.
Okay, very good then, if you would deliver that message about the Coast Guard coming in and taking a look at that tug, that would be very helpful, because we, we don't want the, thank you, sir, I appreciate it, we don't want the oils to get out, it's, it's a disaster, all right, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries, and then Ms. Tamra, when you're having your next Waterfront Partnership meeting, if you'd please include Mr. England, and Mr. Harris, and Mr. Benay, and Brenda, and Courtney, and all of us. All right, thank you. It's the third Wednesday. All right, now we're going to move to old business. Discussion of possible action to do research on establishing mandatory garbage service within the Carabelle City Limits, so we talked about this briefly, somewhat, last month, and we tabled it for the research, and for Courtney to contact Waste Pro and Waste One to come in and just speak to us and answer our questions, so that we can decide how, if we want to even move forward after this discussion. So, do we want to have Waste Pro come first and talk to us, or Waste One, or do it in alphabetical order?
Whatever's first one's first.
That would be Waste One.
Unless there's somebody else.
So, all right then, we'll have Waste One come up and speak to us, if that would be all right, and we'll have some questions for you, and if you'd just introduce yourselves for the record.
We have a flash drive too, is Courtney said that it would be okay that we brought?
Uh-huh, if she's set.
I didn't say, no, I didn't know you were.
Do, okay, you've got a cord back there? Well, go ahead, and let, y'all go ahead and introduce yourselves.
I'm Paige Richards, and this is my husband, Mike Richards, and we're the owners, Waste One.
Okay.
You can use them.
Yeah.
And I apologize in advance, I have a really bad cold right now, so I hope my voice will hold up, I usually don't sound like this, we have been in Franklin County, he's a lifelong resident, he was actually born in the Carabelle Hospital, and I moved here in 1982, we got married in 1984, we've got two grown sons, we've had a number of successful businesses here in Franklin County, we sort of retired in 2017, and decided to open a new business in 2018, which was Waste One, and I guess she'll get this started, and I'll just go with that familiar, just, I think mainly because we're sort of the new people, you know, we sort of want everyone to see who and what we are, our main thing that I really would like to stress is that we are always about customer service, that is our most important thing, so you can go to the next one, Ms. Courtney, and I'll just say next each time, I think I've kind of, oop, go back one, if you can, our personal philosophy, we always think about how would we want to be treated, do you run to others, that's very important to us, we want every customer to be happy, we're always available to take phone calls, if you're not happy, we want to hear about it, next. Once again, we always are available to answer the phone calls, and if we are not there for some reason, we do return the call within 24 hours, we bill quarterly in advance of service, that's not applicable, of course, to the city billing, but I will tell you how we do the bulk billing, with the vacation rental properties on the island, I bill them monthly, if any changes are made, we always try to make the changes at the end of the month, so we don't drive each other crazy with all the preparations, we don't add any additional fees to our bills, and we have other ways of reaching us, a lot of answers will be on our website as well, next. We are licensed bonded and insured, and we currently serve all areas of Franklin County, we have not expanded to Alligator Point yet, and we do not go in the city limits of Appalachia because they are under contract, and right now, we have about 200 customers in Carabelle Atlantic Village area, and about half of those are bear resistant kings right now, next. We serve as the waste provider for all of the bulk accounts for Resort and Collins, and most of the ones for Sandy Beach, and we also offer commercial dumpster service for the area businesses, all of our drivers are commercially licensed, next. This is kind of an important one, you really wouldn't think that, but people steal each other's trash cans, and we actually, our drivers all use routing sheets, every customer is on the routing sheet, their address, their can number, if we have a can pop up in a random place, they don't get that can, they call me, and they say, where did this come from, but that again, can be backtracked, because we use. But that, again, can be backtracked, because we use work orders for every can that we put out. We know who it went to, which driver delivered it, what date, everything is tracked. Um, we always put the can back where it was. We don't throw them down. No mess ever is left. If there's trash on the ground, our guys pick it up. And the bear-resistant cans, we have, they're a little bit more money, a little additional fee. And you go to the next one. And we do recycle right now for free. The trucks are designed with a divided system to pick up the trash and recyclables at the same time. You go to the next one, and there'll be a little video you can click on. This one, the people actually use their trash can that we provide as the recycling, because they found they had more recyclables now than they did trash, and they provided their own trash can. We do not, at this point, provide the recycle cans, so people have not complained. They don't mind buying their own, because they want to do it. Next one. Uh, that's a photo of the back of the truck. The bottom part is where the trash actually is at, and then the top is not opened in that picture, but that's where the recyclables go, so they do stay separated. Right now, the county landfill is actually working on their recycling center. And, um, Mike, when did Mr. Bond say that they should have it?
About next week.
About next week, they should have it done, you know, when they're back operational again. We are still collecting them, you know. And so the next one. Um, all of our men are local guys. We always are in uniform, and they excel at customer service, and they always go above and beyond, every time, always. That's the way we want it. And so the next one. And the trucks, we really take pride in our work ethic and our equipment. All the trucks are pretty new, they're very well-maintained. They are washed inside the bin and out. Everything on them is washed daily, and they don't leak. And we're really proud of our track record so far, and the customers have rated us five-star on Facebook, and we continue, we want to continue to provide that in the future. Right now, one thing I did put into power point is, um, currently, in the summer, on any given Saturday, we currently are servicing about 941 accounts on the island. Um, the majority of those are vacation rental properties. We've never had one complaint. It's always taken care of. We've never missed anybody. And that has been for about the past year. And then there's one more, and that's just some of our customer reviews. Um, so far, we've never had any complaints at all, nothing negative. And we tell people, when we sign them up for service, we want to hear from you. If you have a complaint, we will be able to fix it. If we don't know, we can't fix it. But it's been great so far. It's been since October 2018. And so that's who we are. And Mike, would you know about anything today?
Well, other than, you know, we're both local, and being here locally, and I think it's important that if someone local can work in the community, and, and keep going, not just a couple of employees, but keep up the company going, and everything's safe.
We've had a steady growth continually, every week, and putting out more cans and more units. And so we're really happy with the progress so far, and have kind of grown it organically. We do have a truck right now that is kind of sitting idle, waiting to grow. We have a couple free days that we can grow. So everything is manageable.
All right, um, do you, do you all have questions at this point? Okay, Ben, I'm, I'm just gonna talk a little bit and ask some questions, and then that might spur some more questions. So we're, um, Ms. Courtney contacted the property appraisers' office, and they reported 816 residential dwellings, single-family local homes, townhomes. But though, some of those may not be occupied, some may be needing to be condemned, but there's actual dwellings on 816. So that would take, you know, some review and actually, you know, feet on the ground to see exactly. And then we, we would, we would want to have a contract. Certainly, the city always would have to have a contract, especially if the city's gonna be performing the billing. And, and, you know, we would need some, some clause in it that would be something like a whole harmless clause. And would it be a three-year term or a five-year term? Um, and, and why I say we need indemni, and how do, how you say?
Indemnification?
Indemnification, which is whole harmless, is because if garbage is picked up, and, and this happened with sludge from the wastewater treatment plant, and with another small company that we had, if they pick up garbage in the city of Carabel, then that garbage belongs to the city of Carabel. And if it's dumped somewhere illegally, then the city of Ken has found that it came from the city, then the city is responsible for cleaning it up, the cleanup. And that happened with sludge of disposed, a waste company was hired to take sludge away, supposed to go to the landfill, and went somewhere else, found out it's Carabel's. That happened with a small hauling company back in 2015, I believe it was, late 2015, and they dumped all their garbage in the city alleyway. And it was reported it was a horrific mess, and the city had to clean that up. So, um. Brenna? Yes.
Can I add something? We also are the people who have the county contract for hauling all of the waste out of Franklin County up to Campleton, our parent company, that we've had for about 15 years. Richards Gray is the company that hauls it all away. So it really wouldn't be beneficial for us, especially to dump it somewhere else. But of course, we would have that clause.
So is the household garbage style waste, that's a transfer station, y'all are hauling it?
To Campleton.
Okay, all right. Um, then, I, I, um, okay, so you're, you're gonna offer, you can offer recycling, bear-proof cans. The, let's see, I'm just trying to see here what else is on my list that wasn't covered. Um, I will say I contacted Mrs. Lee Mathis back when she was Appalachian administrator. I'm thinking this was early 2015. And they have mandatory garbage and have had it for years there, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And she said that they, um, they do, they have residential there only, and that the garbage is invoiced, they garbage their service on each utility bill. And that the rates are determined on what the contractor is charging for the service. And then that she said, and someone has told me, that to, we could, the city of Carabel could add a small administrative fee onto that. And what I'm understanding is, from looking at other counties and cities, whenever one company has all of the service, and one company is, is picking up a lot of garbage, the rates actually go down than what they are, you know, lower than what they are right now. And they're even, they end up even being lower with the administrative fee than what they, what they are right now. But we're not gonna talk about money. If we get that far, it would be a sealed bid. She said, Lee Mathis said that it didn't require any additional administrative staff, that once it was keyed in with the software system with the water bill, then it's, it's just collected on the bill. She said the city collects an 11% franchise fee, and the fee covers any staff time that was involved. And I asked her what happens if the, if they're not paying the garbage portion of their bill, and she says they turn the water off, which evidently, we, you know, would have to have Mr. Hartman research that and see if that's, you know, legal by law or statute. No, but we're not that far yet. Okay? Yes? Okay.
I was just gonna add, some of our customers may not be hooked with the water, so.
And Courtney and I reviewed that, and you want to name the areas that we know?
We know that the areas of Baywood Estates is not hooked to water and sewer. Um, there's portions of Bayou Harbor. Some of them guys down there have water, and there's some that don't have anything. So, um, we do know that those two areas for sure don't have water and sewer.
So, yes, sir, yes, sir.
I'm not actually here for all that, but it actually, I brought up a good question. I'm actually one of the few houses out, um, in the county, behind the lighthouse, that actually are hooked to city water. So in the case that, like, right now, I have a private garbage service with a very small business owner in town, Donna, Donna Mathis, she does my garbage for extremely cheap, and I like to support the, the, I mean, I know y'all, y'all are locals, but they're also friends of mine, and they're local, and, um, I don't want to see them stamped out. I don't know if there's any possibility of just maybe making some sort of proof of, proof of garbage service, rather than stamping out the competition. Because as we know, that if you require, what, if you have a contract with one company, that may cause the increase in prices, just because there is no competition.
I can be rough, sir.
It's just a possibility. It's just something to mention, like.
And then, um, so your house that you have at Lighthouse Estates, that wouldn't really be involved, because it's out of the city.
Yeah, but I meant, I have city water, so I don't know how that would fit in there, just in that case, just something to mention.
And, yes, sir, Mr. Hartman, about?
It's simply, it would be exclusive franchise for 10 municipal minutes. So that wouldn't apply if it was outside of municipal.
Okay, all right, all right.
Regardless of whether they're served by water or.
Okay. And so, and then, at that time, Mrs. Mathis said that they have a three-year term with their provider. And, uh, all right, so, commercial accounts, do you have any idea how you would handle commercial accounts? Or would you like that?
We, we have quite a few now. I think we have about 35 or 40 right now. Um, we service them on certain days, some one at twice a week, some one at once a week. I have had a couple inquiries recently about more times a week, and we're working with those people now. So, um, we have the dumpsters. We have a new load coming in about two weeks, I think.
All right. Okay, gentlemen, do y'all have questions? Does anyone from the audience have questions or a comment? Yes, or Mr. Hummel?
I had a question about the recycling. Did you say that if the customer provides recycling can, then you will pick it up?
Well, that's if they are a customer at this point, because I gain nothing from the recyclables, other than they just end up right thing, because they will do it, we pick it up, same time we pick up their solid waste.
So if I got a can, you'd pick it up?
Yes, as far as the few one that come.
And I was interested about the coding. You said you hit the.
It's just serial numbers on the can, and basically, we just track that with the person that's got the account with that can.
Believe it or not, the main occurrence of that is on St. George Island. I don't know if it's the vacationers or what the deal is, but we've actually tracked down five different cans and put it back where they went. And so everybody's happy, and we didn't lose a can, and we know where they're at. And if they show up somewhere they're not supposed to be, we know it.
That, that sounds good. I had a garbage can stolen. We asked a bit, had it replaced, and then when the person was replacing it, said he had heard that we had given our can to somebody. And I'm going, like, where did that come from? You know, I think an ID number would be excellent.
Mr. Augustine?
Do you have restrictions on how much can be put out, and in what form it can be put out?
Um, right now, we kind of just use, you know, if they want one can, if they want two cans, occasionally, we let people put out a second can. On the recyclables, the more, the better. You know, it's the right thing to do. And like he said, we don't make anything off of it. We don't charge anything for it right now. If it got to be, you know, we, we probably have to put that in as part of the negotiation. We don't provide the bins, um, you know, that change something, you know, that could change as well.
Sure, if, um, you know, it's depending on what the customer would like. If they would like for us to purchase cans as we do with our other cans, they do have, you know, we can get them. But we have to pass that expense on. I mean, we want to rent it or whatever. So right now, the only way it could work, to not make anything off of it, is they provide their own container.
And yard waste and?
Yard waste, not us.
Not, not, not at this time, no.
The county, at this point, is handling our yard waste, at this point.
Do the recyclables have to be sorted?
No, sir, they don't. They, they sort them out at the county landfill. The only thing that they're not taking right now is glass. Um, they don't have a market for it. So everything just goes in, and they sort it out out there. We have, you know, we dump the trash at one place, and recyclables over the recycling, so.
Okay, and Mr. Melcher?
If, if you got a trash can out there, and it's really cold, and you got a large item you can't put in, do you also take that, sit next to the can?
Um, it would depend on what it is. Our trucks are top loaders. It would go up in the air if it were a safety issue, like a barbecue grill or something like that, you know, that just couldn't go up overhead. No, sir, we would not. Um, a, a lot of people want to put things like water heaters and things, and that's something. If you have a contractor that's working with you, they should take care of the disposal of that to start with.
Household collections usually once a week?
Yes, sir, once a week. We do do twice a week for the vacation rental properties. So if your, if your can's too full, and you set a bag next to it? That's fine.
Okay. Ask that the next time, to which Waste Pro. Well, I can't remember all the questions. Let's, I'll write it down. All right, do you, gentlemen, Ms. Courtney? Mr. Martin? Oh, we've got gentlemen waving their hands, okay.
Not, not so much for them, but for you and the commissioner, Madam Mayor. I'm talking about, you know, adding it to the water bill and all that, and then we have places that don't necessarily connect it to water, and how would we do that? Have we talked about maybe just adding it to the yearly tax? That way you don't have the administrative burden, so you can drop that off, and it'd be cheaper. And if everybody pays our tax bill every year, then it's paid for.
That's a good idea. It really is. And I'll let Ms. Courtney, so, you know, I'm.
Well, we have looked at that option, but even though we do not have a water and sewer account, we can still create an account on that system, and they'll still get a bill. They'll just get a trash bill on water and sewer and trash.
Okay, you was talking about cutting off their water if they didn't pay the trash bill, if they don't have water and sewer.
You would have to lean their property.
But I was just saying, I've done it before, and I've lived places where you pay your taxes, your trash can is delivered, and it works out great, because one, it's once a year, you're done with it.
It is, it's fabulous.
And if we don't have the 11% administrative fee, you don't have administrative burden.
Yeah. But, and, and it does, doesn't necessarily have to be 11%, as just what we got information, Appalachia. But what we have here is a situation between city, county. And the county, it collects the taxes, all the taxes, all the taxes from even within both incorporated cities. If we were to have mandatory garbage, and then we had the fee, and we have the county now collecting that fee, and then the county would have to write the check to Waste One or Waste Pro, the county's gonna charge us for a service. They'll charge us. We would have to go to the county and ask them to do this service for us, and have a memorandum of agreement. And the county, they don't want to, they're, they have been hesitant, because they, they say that they're afraid that the folks won't pay, and then they have, that they're not gonna pay their garbage portion of their tax bill, and then they'll have to end up putting a lien. And if the county is doing the collections, then the county is responsible, and it's, if the county would have mandatory garbage countywide, then it would be much more simple.
Yes, ma'am.
But in Appalachia, we can investigate, you know, if the commission decides they want to move forward with it, then we'll go investigate a little deeper and see how Appalachia really, you know, handles it, and get some more information from some other cities that, that do it as well, so.
I think it's an awesome idea, and I think it's neat.
All right, well, it is.
Wouldn't there be an issue with, with renters, though, because they don't pay taxes? I mean, they don't, not, they don't pay property taxes a renter?
They would have a water bill.
No, but, but if you were gonna bill them as a tax bill, like you're saying?
We can't do that.
Right.
The owner pays for it, and includes it in the rent.
That's right.
Right, that's what we're.
Yes, sir.
Do we have an idea of what pricing would be per mug?
We're not gonna discuss that. We haven't gotten that far yet. They would make sealed bids when we, when we, because we have two competitors here, and we don't want either one of them to, to give out prices yet.
Because I know we are in kind of like a, you know, kind of like a, not necessarily dilapidated, but there's a lot of people that don't make a whole lot of money, and if, if we don't really have an idea of what they're gonna be paying, it might cause undue stress. And, and I believe we need garbage, because, I mean, anybody can go out there and look around and see how much garbage is all over the place. But if, if they can't pay it, then it's not, you know, we're gonna have a worse problem. We're gonna have people going without water, and things like that. It's just, it's just something to consider.
All right. Um, thank you.
Because some people do take their trash and take it directly to the.
My husband and I have never had garbage service. We've been married 30 years. We take our garbage, even when we lived in Mapleton, Georgia, to the landfill. If, if this comes to pass, we will have. If, if this comes to pass, we will have to have paid garbage, you know, on our water bill. What does it cost, Mr. Greg?
Three, four dollars a month.
You know, three or four dollars a month.
No, is that anything?
Yeah, to take it to the landfill. So it will be, it will be, you know, a stress on us. We're not accustomed to paying that. So, but, and the overall scheme of things, to clean up the trash and the litter, it would really benefit Carabelle in the long run. And, and I, I was going to read this at the end, but since we're talking about trash and litter, someone sent this to me, a private message on Facebook, a trip advisor, about Carabelle. Garbage, garbage everywhere, several exclamation marks. So, I really wanted to review the town of Carabelle, but this will do since the beach and the town are intertwined. The issue, garbage, garbage everywhere. The town of Carabelle should be ashamed of themselves to spoil such a beautiful spot. The sides of the road are frequently used as garbage, as a garbage pail, and no one bothers to clean it up. She says, "I will never be back. A most disgusting place." But, you know, and it's sad, it is sad, and if we had, it's not going to, this is not going to stop the dumps, the garbage dumps, and it's not going to stop. Some people are complaining about the carcasses being thrown, the deer carcasses, they're not making it. The county provides a dumpster in locations all over the county to put carcasses in. And people don't put the carcass in the dumpster, they throw the carcasses all around outside the dumpster. And so it's not going to stop that kind of stuff. But it will help tremendously with the litter that we see and to clean up the waterways and to help clean up our woods, because the bears drag these garbage bags into the, into the woods. And it's, it's just a terrible mess. So, it would help in the long run with economic development, because it's very hard to attract businesses and to get people to move here whenever they see this, this kind of litter that we have in some places. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, since Appalachia already has mandatory garbage pickup, and I know that the county has discussed mandatory garbage pickup ad nauseam. I think that perhaps if Carabelle would lead the way, it might help the county to move forward also. I also wanted to say I am a customer of Waste One and I am very pleased with the service. And I put my little recyclables on top in a paper bag or whatever I have, and they take it. And I'm very pleased with the service. That's just an unsolicited commercial.
They're not going to pay you.
Not at all.
All right, any further questions for Waste One representative? All right, well, we thank you so much, thank you for coming and sitting through this grueling meeting. All right, then we'll move forward with Mr. and Mr. Waste Pro. And if you'll introduce yourselves when you come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Lloyd Children. I'm the director of Governmental Affairs at Municipal Marketing for Waste Pro in the region. The region I represent extends from Taylor County all the way over to Mobile. Now.
If you'll just speak a little louder.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, get closer to it. Currently, we probably serve about two-thirds of the customers here in Carabelle. I think we do a great job. We use rearload trucks. So with rearload trucks, we're able to not just pick up what's in the can, we can pick up what's beside the can. We can pick up small bulk items that we'll have to put in mechanically and dump overhead. Not that that's a bad system. We have that system in Tallahassee. It's a great system. And by the way, kudos to your PowerPoint. It was tremendous. There's a lot to be said for, for local companies. I believe in spending my dollars local as well. Now, I say that to say this, you know, Waste Pro's a big company. We're the largest in the southeast. We're a privately owned company. We're a Florida-based company. But the way we run our business is somewhat a franchise, if you will. It's not a franchise per se, but. So locally, we have local managers, we have local employees. In fact, people that work on Carabelle actually live here in Carabelle. They're part of the community. They volunteer in the community. And we'd like to see them continue to work here. Whether we end up being a provider, we move on to mandatory, or if you have a franchise agreement that allows several, the way you want to write it up in a contract, we're going to be on board with whatever we do. There were several questions that were asked here earlier. To your point, sir, and I think it was touched on earlier, when you have a mandatory situation built through the city, whichever device you use, it always decreases the cost. So whenever you have a servant, you're paying X for it, you can look forward to a lower rate if it's built through the city and it's mandatory. Simply because if we're here and there's eight hundred customers and we're servicing half of that, we're not making as much money as we would if we were servicing all of them. We don't have the collection rates issue where you have to bill individually. Sometimes you bill, sometimes they don't pay, they go into collections. We don't have an enforcement tool other than to go grab our cans, where the city would have enforcement tool. So that has value to us, would have value to any home. So as a result, the price will come down. So there are several things that you want to think about when you think about having your service done. Obviously, I already touched on local community, I believe in that. One of the things that we do, we do support the local community, either by providing free services to the government, free services to events, which we do here in Carabelle and throughout Franklin County. Recently, Waste Pro committed to Franklin County, but where they're premier sponsors of the census. As you all know, the census is a very important tool in getting a true count, so you can get the better dollars that your communities need. We know that. So we committed to Franklin County to be that person to help get it out. There, there are several things that you need to think about when hiring a hauler. Significant weather events of the past, early past has dictated that, your ability to mobilize. Because we have, we have trucks in Panama City. We have them in, we'll just say all over Panama, probably have five or six hundred trucks. It'd be an area that should catastrophe, they don't let it happen. It does happen. We have the ability to mobilize. I was a division manager in Panama City during the outbreak. When that happened, I brought trucks in from all over Panama, probably had five or six hundred trucks. It'd be in an area that should catastrophe, they don't let it happen. It does happen. We have the ability to mobilize. That's a big part when you have a hauler, especially in today's environment. The other things you need to think about, the ability to be bonded, have a high enough level of insurance in order to hold the city harmless if any event happens. We're capable of doing that. It's not easy to sit up here and say, "We're going to be perfect." We hire a lot of people, a lot of trucks. Thing about people and trucks, people get sick, trucks go down. There's always going to be issues in part. But I commit to you, should you move forward, franchise agreement, in part or in whole, we will be here to service you. And you will always have me or our team members here to call and take care of any issues that you would have. And I am also open to any questions.
Do you all have questions?
I think he's covered quite a few. He heard most of them already, so.
All right, so you all would have no problem with the contract in and the whole harmless clause and all that stuff?
Oh, no, we do that with every contract that we have. We actually, we probably have eight hundred different municipal contracts that are.
And how, how do you all propose to handle commercial accounts?
Currently, I believe we do most, if not all, the commercial accounts in this area.
And would you want, would you continue managing the commercial accounts?
Commercial accounts are typically done individually, not through the municipality. So within the, within the franchise agreement, it would dictate both residential and commercial franchise as being mandatory, and others, one hauler, two haulers, five haulers. You know, whoever the hauler is, they would build that commercial entity individually. When you transition over, should you choose us or should you choose anybody? One of the things you want to make sure of is, when you transition over, the ability to transition. If there's, we'll just say for St. Bartley, there's two hundred and fifty customers that we don't have in the area. I've got two hundred and fifty cans sitting on the ground tomorrow. Should, should, if that comes where we are your hauler, it would take me less than a week to mobilize.
Okay, recycling, do you all offer that? These are questions that people have asked me to answer. Recycling and bear proof, bear resistant.
I probably have three hundred bear-proof cans sitting on the ground right now, waiting to be used. Like Waste One, it is at additional cost. They're bear-resistant cans.
Yes, bear.
I was just thinking of a bear-proof can. If they can't get through the front, they'll chew their way through the back. And as far as recycle goes, yes, we do recycle. We offer either an eighteen-gallon square box that you can put it in, or we can offer the totter cart that rolls out for more volume.
And contract term, do you all have a preference, three-year, five-year?
Well, typically, in most municipalities, I operate the contracts for a few years, they're five and five. We would entertain any amount of time.
And five and five, that means five-year term with the option to renew for five?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then restrictions, someone asking here something, do you have restrictions on the amount of garbage per resident?
There's, if it fits in the can, we're going to dump it. If it's bagged next to the can, we're going to grab it because we have rear loaders. Our guys physically ride on the back of the truck. So when they pull, if there's garbage there, grab it and throw it in. If it's, if it's leafy material, loose material, we don't encourage that because it can be a safety hazard. Anytime you start reaching into garbage, even though you're plugged, you don't know whether there's hazardous material, especially after a storm.
And then the times per week for your best.
Typically, it's one time a week.
One time a week.
We have customers on the island that like to go, you know, when it's seasonal. They'll increase their, their charges accordingly, and we'll do, we'll take care of it.
Ms. Keisha, the question that you answered, did, did he answer your?
Yeah, the bags.
All right, okay.
Mayor?
Yes, I was looking to see if I had another question. Yes, yes.
Do you have a local office? Because every time I call, I've had trouble getting someone short of being in New Jersey that would talk to me about my garbage issues, since I just wondered if, do you have local customer service staff?
We have, we have an office in East Pointe. It's on the north side of the highway before you get to the bridge on the right. We maintain that, that office. When there's no one there to take the call, it transfers over to our Crawfordville office. We're not in New Jersey.
That's, that's a big group. It goes somewhere far away. I don't know where, but.
But, I mean, it rolls over to Crawfordville. We do maintain a customer service, full-time customer service staff there. And we maintain a full-time customer service staff in Tallahassee as well.
Thank you. All right, then are there any other questions for Mr. Children? Any questions from the audience? Ms. Courtney? All right, then, I'm going to ask the difficult question to commissioners. Is this something that you all want to move forward with? Would you like for these two companies to submit a bid with the contract? Or we would have to have Mr. Hartman kind of, you know, review what needs to be on a contract? We would certainly need to contact a couple of more cities, two or three at least, to see how they handle their mandatory garbage. Is it legal to put on, you know, put it on the water bill? But then if they don't pay, you know, how do you manage that? Is there a fine or, you know, that kind of thing? So, we need to know, are we, are we moving forward with this? We had these, these two companies representatives here to give you an idea, what to expect. I know it will help with the cleanup of Carabelle, and that's the main issue. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, one thing you'll find out, mandatory garbage is one of the hardest things to do. But once you get it done, it's one of the hardest things to take away from. Because it will increase property values. It will increase your ability to raise revenue here through taxes, through the tourism industry. I hate to say it like this, but it's, it's what differentiates civilization from everything else, your ability to move and put away trash.
All right, and how would you like to move forward? Would you like them to bring us a bid?
Yes.
Okay, sealed bid, all right. And we'll get Mr. Hartman then to advise us. Okay, do we have a second on that? I'm going to ask again, do we have a second with moving forward on, on these two companies presenting us with a sealed bid?
I'll second.
Okay, all right. Okay, so now we are going to have discussion.
Yeah, I just have one, one question. I, I mean, I was going to second Commissioner Mathis's motion. The only thing, I don't think we're at the point yet to go ahead and give bids. I would like to see us continue to move forward and go ahead and explore our options and see what all of our options are on the whole process before we accept bids from any companies. That's just my opinion.
And who's going to explore these options?
It's a good question, but I think, I think our options need to be explored before we do it. And, and not get a bunch of bids and decide we're not going to do it. But I'm with it. I think it's good. The only thing that I hope the general public understand that cleaning up Carabelle, I think it'd help, but it's household trash that we're talking about making mandatory, not the litter that we see on the road show.
You mean like the dumps, the dump piles?
Like the washing machines and dryers and refrigerators and couches and chairs. It's not going to help that.
No, it's not going to help that.
All that's going to help is the household garbage.
And the, and the small litter that we see people throwing out. And, and what we have, sometimes we have people that are picking up garbage that don't have a closed truck and the, and the folks are setting a little garbage bag out by the side of the road and they're not using containers. The, you know, there's, the service is not, does not provide a container. And that's then where your bears get into some of this garbage and get it all up the place. So if you have a commercial hauler, then, you know, it's a different situation.
We do provide bulk service. It is on a contract basis. It wouldn't be through the city. So should somebody have washers, dryers, we, they could contract with us to come pick them up. One thing that has to be done, I think this is on the Florida statute, is that they have to be free of any ozone-depleting agents. So it would have to be drained of any Freon or refrigerants.
Well, the other thing, and, and it would help with mandatory, everyone having a can. But as these folks have emphasized a couple different times, bears are still going to get in the cans. Do it every night. I have one. My neighbors have one. They still turn it sideways, bounce on it, pop it in the lock loose.
What kind do you have?
Well, it's one of yours.
Is it locked in the middle or is it locked in the side?
Locked in the middle.
Yeah, that's, it's made by the totter, totter company. They either.
But anyway, I'm, I'm just talking, you know, about our decision, what we're going to make here, so.
Well, I, I would say one thing with sealed bids and if we, if we open those bids, it would give us an idea of what, what it would cost, you know, and whether or not the rates are lower. And it would give, it would bring people out of the woodwork and, and they would come in. If, you know, if this is put in the paper and put on Facebook, they would, you know, really understand this, this could. really understand this, this could be for real. Sealed bids don't mean that we have, have done it yet or anything like that, and, and they, you know, folks would come in and speak, I hope, you know, we would have more public input.
Well, I definitely feel like as, as both companies have described here, that it's definitely gonna be less expensive on the customer. And that's, that's one of the positives, one of the positives.
Yes, Mr. Adlerstein.
I'll try to sneak, sneak one in here.
Okay.
You have the Apalachicola contract?
We do.
It has X number of customers?
It has X number of customers.
Carabelle would likely have fewer?
That would be my impression.
Yes.
Would that translate to higher cost?
Not if we're servicing the area. If we're here and we can service the whole area, you're gonna have between 500 and 600 by our, our count, 500 or 600.
I got a count from the property appraisal office, it was for single-family homes, rental homes and townhomes, it was 816.
Do we know how many of those are being lifted?
I don't.
So, we'll, we'll use that number. That's a route date for us. So, we could come in here in one day and complete that. So, if, so to answer your question, though, it wouldn't go, it wouldn't be higher because there's less than, we're less than just a few miles from Appalachia. We have the trucks and facilities here. It would be a fold-in for us.
All right, is there any other discussion? We have a, yes, sir.
I think before you move forward, I mean, we just, before it goes to a bid, we gotta have a little more information where everybody's on the same board on what we got, because you gotta be apple to apples when we go to bid, so we, you know, we both can do a fair bid, you know, so we need the clarification of what the city wants.
All right.
But that would come in the RFP.
Yeah, and then, once we do that, then we move forward, but, you know, where it's clarified exactly what we bid and what you want, we can, we can get down to it.
Okay, so the city clerk then mentioned that what we would need to develop is spec- specifications package. Would that be more in line with Mr. Attorney?
Yes, I think, just what you mentioned, the RFP, you all will see that before we send it out to bid, then you get your sealed bids, so you'll be able to tune, or at least kind of address some of the concerns that Commissioner Miller has. If this won't happen next month.
No, it will take some time, it will take some time.
Slow down.
All right, all right, then.
I'm sorry, I, if y'all just mentioned that we couldn't hear a kind of clear whenever you're speaking.
No, it hasn't. Did you hear it? Okay. You're okay, though, right now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So what we have is a motion to move forward with a, asking them to submit a bid and a second for discussion. Since we have discussed that we would rather have a, possibly, develop a specifications package to send out for RFPs or RFPs. I would say, can I say how I would recommend for these commissioners to vote?
Just call for a motion? Now, you, I mean, there's discussion.
I would say, I would say, um, vote, just vote knowing this, and then we'll just have another...
I don't understand. I guess what I was trying to...
Oh, okay, okay. We gotta rescind my motion. Mr. Commissioner Mathis is rescinding his motion. Will you rescind it?
I rescind the second.
All right. Okay, now.
Try it again.
Very good. Very good. Do you have another motion you'd like to make?
No, I'm gonna let you make it.
All right, I'll make it. I would like to make a motion that we have the attorney develop a specifications package for a request for proposal for garbage, mandatory garbage service within the city limits, Carabelle. And we'll review that before we present it to, let all the commissioners have input on it, an opportunity to have input before we present it to the commission in a public meeting. All right, so I made the motion, is somebody gonna second my motion?
I'll second.
Well, thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And in that motion cleared, all right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, folks, for helping us work this out, I appreciate it.
Not approached, Julie, by Hartman.
Yes, sir. Or you could just hand it to Ms. Keesha and she'll pass them out. All right, approaching nine o'clock. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move forward here? If that's all right, Mr. Childery, we're gonna move forward. While you're still there, because it's, it's getting late for us and a lot of us haven't had dinner.
Okay.
And the reason we had that discussion is because it's been requested by a lot of folks, especially during the three weeks or so that our recycling was taken away, and we just got kind of overwhelmed with people saying, just go ahead and go to mandatory garbage. It's the same old business item too, discussion of possible action regarding an ordinance to regulate movement and ingress of mobile homes within the city limits, is that we've had, you know, enraged citizens complaining about mobile homes being moved around and, and age of mobile homes and all of that stuff, which we, we went over last month, but like I said, you can't turn, you can't turn people away when they have complaints, so you have to, you have to try to discuss it and work it out. Now, I want to tell you that I, over this past month, I've conducted many, many long hours of tedious research, you can ask my husband. I reached out to Andrew Ross and Derek Hancock, they're consultants with the Manufacturing Housing Section of the Florida Department of Highway Safety. I talked with John Costrelles of Pinellas County Building Department, Andrew Ewing of the Collier County Building Department, and yesterday I had a scheduled lengthy consultation with Ms. Joanne Mis, her last name is M.I.S., as she is the Head State Operations Service Manager in the Manufacturing Housing Division of the Florida Department of Highway Safety. All of these people have been very helpful. And from this research, I assembled a packet, which is right here, a packet, and of technical advisories and conclusions that have been developed by the Department of Florida Department of Highway Safety regarding pre-HUD mobile homes and the movement of pre-HUD mobile homes. That's been sent digitally to the clerk and to Ms. Courtney and to our city attorney, and the commissioners now have a hard copy of it. These advisories and conclusions are provided, and, and anybody who wants a hard copy can have it or digital. Okay, they're provided by the Florida Department of Highway Safety as to advise the people of the state of Florida to provide guideline, guidelines to follow for their safety. But, I learned yesterday, in the end, even though the Florida Department of Highway Safety gives these advisories and conclusions, in the end, it's up to the local authority of the local jurisdiction on whether or not to enforce these advisories by ordinance. So they've got these advisories, which are very informative to read, and, and especially when you, let me, let me tell you what goes on in the rest of the state, but they have to be enforced by ordinance. Florida has 14 designated wind zone three counties, including Franklin County. Thirteen of those counties and many cities within those counties have adopted ordinances regulating the relocation or, or re-siting is what they call it, of pre-HUD and wind zone two mobile homes. Frank, excuse me, the state of Florida does have some wind zone two states, counties, but the 13 is, they're mostly south and then up, up in the panhandle, it's Franklin and Gulf. Actually, I've got a picture of it here. And pictures in the packet, too. These blue are the wind zone three counties. These 13 counties that are, that have, have adopted ordinances allow the pre-HUD and wind zone two mobile homes to be grandfathered in at the location where they were originally placed. But these homes are not allowed to be relocated unless under an involuntary or forced move, like eminent domain or foreclosure on the land they sit on, something like that. To the surprise of many of these people that I just mentioned, actually all of them that I consulted with, when I told them that Franklin County continues to allow pre-HUD and wind zone two mobile homes to be relocated at will and randomly to any area zoned for mobile homes in the county, they, they were just very surprised because these, the other 13 counties do have ordinances regulating it. Now, the Franklin County will not allow pre-HUD homes to be moved in exposure D zones, and we've got some exposure D zones in, in Franklin County. I don't think I asked, I asked Ms. Keesha if we had any exposure D within the city of Carabelle. We just... So, although we know these pre-HUD homes were not built in accordance with the federal national manufacturing housing construction and safety standards, they were not built to resist high winds, sidewalls and rafters aren't tied down, they're not wrapped in OSB, the windows and doors won't tolerate high winds, I do not suspect that this commission would adopt an ordinance on its own at this point to regulate movement of mobile homes. I've worked with these fellows up here long enough, I don't expect they're gonna do it. And what I would say is that if the citizens want this, the enraged folks that have come in to see me and Courtney and calling me on the phone, if they really want this, they're gonna need to come forward to this commission and stand right there, and they're gonna have to ask this commission to develop an ordinance. I, I don't expect these commissioners are gonna do it on their own, with all due respect. And so, if we, each commissioner and administrative staff, as I've told you earlier, have a copy of this. If anybody here wants a copy, they can have my copy right now. Send you a digital copy, okay. And if any citizens come in and they're, they're, you give them this and you tell them to come see us, and we'll see what we can work out. And I just want to remind you all that we discussed this at the last meeting back in 1999, the state began requiring certification and licensing of mobile home installers, and all manufactured mobile homes must be set in place by a licensed installer per Florida statute 320.8285. And as well, a new manufactured home must be set to the manufacturer's instructions, including the, using the installation instruction book that accompanies the new manufactured home. I ask about used homes, since a used home wouldn't have a, an instruction book, and used mobile homes must be set according to the Florida Administrative Code, which we discussed last month, Administrative Code 15C-1 and 15C-2, all of this is per Florida statute, and of course, a licensed installer would have to install a used mobile home as well. On the state, they refer to pre-HUD mobile home, pre-HUD mobile homes as mobile homes. After pre-HUD, they refer to the wind zone two and three mobile homes as manufactured homes. That's just the way the state refers to it, I'm just throwing that in for a little information. But I would say, once again, unless your commissioners want anything different, my, my advice is to the citizens, if they advise anything, if they desire anything more stringent than what the city of Carabelle is doing at this point, then they need to come in, it's gonna be incumbent upon them to come in and see us and approach us, just like someone came in last summer and approached us for an amended animal control ordinance. All right, do we have anything else we need to say?
It's right there, it's right there.
Okay.
May I come up and throw you in?
Yes, sir, please do.
Hi, my name's Kai Nelson, owner, operator of Venture Cat Building Company. The name represents my growth and the future, not necessarily my current state, but I know that this issue has a lot to do with what I've done here previously. I did my research plenty, and Keesha can attest, and I've always came into the office and checked with the local, with the local laws, make sure that I was doing everything I was a little bit angry after the last meeting, but I do want to just clarify a couple things that there is no debris on any of my properties. One of them is a mobile, one of my mobile homes that I was setting up is a mobile because the actions were stolen out from under it, and the person was not prosecuted because the Carabelle police did not want to do trespassing, even though there was verified that he stole it, he even, even admitted to it. So, but from that, I've already talked to Keesha and worked with her that I'm actually gonna demolish that mobile home at my, my financial loss, and I'm gonna step back from rebuilding these mobile homes into affordable housing at this moment in time, pursue other business interests until a further time, just because this incident did spook me with the city commission as far as what they will be doing here. But I, I did get clarification, I didn't expect that, but I may revisit that, but I do want people to understand that my mobile homes are built very well, and my tenants are very happy. But from there, no hard feelings, and I do want you guys to know that I'm, I'm here to stay, I've been here for years, and I plan on making my mark on Carabelle in the best interest of the people, and, and I need to make money along the way, otherwise I can't fund it. But I already invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this community, and I plan to continue to do that. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for sitting through this grueling meeting.
Yeah.
And it is, and bring us down, which with you next time. Come on forward, sir.
Two.
Yeah, one for all of us.
Well, thank you for having me scratch all my notes.
Okay.
But I do want to say, you did say something last, in last month's meeting, that I really agree with, although I don't think that we should stop moving zone two and all, because a 70-year model mobile home can be just as good to move as a 2000. It all depends on the upkeep.
That's correct.
But you mentioned something last month about maybe this city should look at maybe a permit to have them inspected before they are relocated. My question with that, and I think that's a great idea, but are we looking at a period? What do they look like? Because what might look like junk to one person, six grand later can look like the best rental on the block. Two, are we checking structural integrity? And then if we're going to check structural integrity, who does the city have on staff that is certified to tell that a mobile home, metal structure on wheels, is safe to move down the road? So, I think it's an excellent idea because it is a safety fact. I know you've had one or two recently, maybe end up on the side of the road, and to prevent that from happening and then another colossal. So, I agree with that. However, you know, I think that, I told you I was gonna take more than 30 minutes earlier. About 11 years ago, and this is what I love about Carabelle, is I bought my first city lot in Carabelle, I was probably about a couple of years into my career and I could do it, and I bought that lot so my mama didn't have to move, bounce around from house to house and house, unless she chose to move. It's out of her lifetime lease, here you go. Started her there with a camper, 12-foot mom. Eventually graduated, a little bit something bigger. Eventually, we was able to find a used mobile home, move it on there, pulled a permit, and it's still there today. Something about that is there's most places you can't do that, and that gave my mama a place to have for the rest of her life. Had a couple, veteran, house burned down, great. I was able to rebuild a mobile home, 6,000 land, so roughly say I have 20 grand into it. Now I can offer this disabled veteran who's on a fixed income, an affordable house. Not in it to make the money, in it to make the community better and offer something for it. That way, whenever I retire and come back here in a couple of years, with my kids to finish high school and all, I have something, my family has something. So, being able to do those things is what makes Carabelle great. So, thank you.
All right, and, and before you go, I want to answer your question now about the pre-inspection. All right, and before you go, I wanted to answer your question now about the pre-inspection. And I only got that, I learned that from researching mobile home permits throughout the state to deplace a mobile home, and most, overwhelmingly, all of them require pre-inspection. And the person that would do the pre-inspection would be the, our building inspector, and we would contract, our county building inspector does the inspections now of all of our houses, and actually, if you're gonna remodel a mobile home, wouldn't Mr. Melander do the, yes, the inspections? So that's who would do the pre-inspection, a certified with the state building inspector. And then I had another, I mean, you know, it's getting late and I'm old, so...
Oh, yeah, but my question with that is, inspecting something that is permanently affixed to the ground by pulling it down the road, and I just think that, is that something we might wanna reach out to a manufacturing, manufacturing home company and say, hey, what is your people certifications do they have to say that's safe to go down the road? Totally different than state build is not moving...
I understand.
Than to say, hey, it's moving down the road. And Mr. Gary Melander, he does great. I was on the phone with him a couple weeks ago with a question, but is that the same thing as going in and looking and saying, good, or going in and knowing that it's safe to move down the road?
Or, you know, if the commission wants to move that and put that as one of the mobile, on the mobile home checklist, you know, we could easily enough call around to any of these other cities and counties that do it and say, who do you have inspecting these mobile homes? But it could be the mobile home certified installer even, you might contract them. It's a, they have a nominal fee, it's like sixty-five dollars, so I don't know, you know, exactly, but I, I don't get in, I do an awful lot of research. I spend hours, forty, sixty hours a week, working for the city, but sometimes I put a limit to it because if I went into all the details and this commission says no, then, you know, it's for naught, and so I haven't gone that far yet. If the commission wants to look into putting it on them, putting that on the mobile home checklist, then we'll do it. That's why I asked Commissioner Melander a minute ago, he wants to research options. I said, who's gonna research the options?
No doubt. I think our current, our current, our current code has worked well and is for, and that's the reason that, like I said, that's what makes Caribou great, is like if I was to pursue any option, that would be the option, and not the age of it or the wind zone.
Yeah, and I think we can't, we can't, from what I've learned from Mr. Hardman is that we can't discriminate, you know, against the age of a mobile home, and we can't, we can't really discriminate, you know, we need these older homes for housing, affordable housing, so it's understandable. It's just whether or not they can survive the trip, first of all.
Oh, yeah.
And then we want them to be able to survive the winds as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now I think I understand that you're in the service? In the military, no?
Yes, I was not going to mention that or do that at this setting, since I was debating you on a public forum, but since we're done, yes, I have eighteen years in the service.
Well, thank you. I wanted to thank you for your service. I appreciate it.
To speak of which, the reason I asked about the Coast Guard earlier is because I have eighteen years in the Coast Guard.
Well, send someone over to check that.
Wrong name or for me. I'm actually, I'm actually professionally on the officer in charge of age navigation team, Todd Allen.
Very good. Wonderful, thank you. Thank you for coming over to see us tonight.
Nice five hours job this morning.
Yes, Mr. Hummel.
I'm trying to see how this discussion relates to concern I have, which is on Avenue J, on the north side of Avenue J, up towards Tallahassee. I was walking down the road, a one-ton duly truck put a mobile home in there, stuck it in there, it has some broken windows in it, it's got a couple of blocks under the front end, so it doesn't go down. All the tie-downs that were used, you know, for the ground screws are hanging off the bottom, and there it sits.
May I, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
I think I have, I think I have pretty good firsthand knowledge on that. I got a call, and to back up last meeting, none of this is done in the meet, in the middle of the night in blindness, or nothing is brought into the county. I got a call on Friday, and I work, I was five hours away, and said, hey, I got this mobile home, I need it moved, it's getting, you know, I think there were some other issues going on with the city with it. Hell's surprise. I was like, cool, I'll come down and look at it. Six hours later, so I come down, nice, beautiful inside. So I own all them lots on the corner.
You what?
I own all them lots you're talking about.
You own all the lots on the corner?
Yeah, I do. Okay.
So, and that one was about a half a block down the road, and it's already had power and sewer and everything on it. So that one, the brown one, I had somebody who wanted to say, hey, I'll take it, can I just park it there until I can move it to my land? I said, go ahead, park it there. I own it, didn't violate, didn't violate any city ordinance, didn't violate any Florida DOT laws, simply moved it back there, blocked it up, and then moved the other one in. So there was a plan to get rid of that. It's never been stayed, but I just needed it out of my way so I could put the other one where it needed to go.
Okay. So, so are you saying that if you have an idea in the future when that will be moved?
I do.
Okay.
And it's being, it's being worked on, but it's hard to, and I'll give you another idea, and we laughed about it in this, we laughed about it in this same meeting last month. I had another house, which, thanks for the cities, no longer there yet, no more, me and Keisha worked together, and it's gone. But say, eight months ago, I called up somebody, got a price to demolish it, called up somebody and said, hey, you want the metal on it? Talked about it, didn't hear nothing from them for eight months. I get a phone call, hey, you know all the metal's gone from around your building? No, I didn't. So now we put a plan in action to get that taken care of, and working with the city, it was taken care of. So for things to develop, it takes, sometimes it takes time, it don't happen overnight, and just like the trash and all, we want a process to get it all there. It's been there all of three weeks. I promise you, I'm working on getting it out of there.
Well, yeah, but, you know, from a residence point of view, when I'm walking down there, there's one on the other side of the street where the, sort of the tongue part bent up in the mud, and it's, it's sticking there, and I'm going like, there's this one, and there's that one, and...
So I'll tell you the backstory on that one. That one was pulled from the lot next door to that. I know the two lots were currently sitting, and that one used to sit there. Somebody who was inequipped to move it, moved it in the tongue bent and broke down on the middle of Avenue J. I'm talking to Keisha, they were talking about finding him, and it had been sitting there for, I think, around two weeks, something like that, or maybe not quite that, ten days. And I was trying to help them boys out, so I knew who they were, and they sold it to me. I didn't really wanna buy it, I didn't really have a plan for it, but I had those two lots there that had a mobile home. So I actually took my equipment because...
I make a motion to adjourn.
But I moved, I moved that mobile home over to that lot and sat there until somebody stole the axle, and now I'm no longer able to move it.
Okay, point of order then, sir. I'm sorry, but we have a motion to adjourn.
No second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Maddox, second by Commissioner Allen. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.